Thank you for your patience. Do we have one, two, three, four, five, six? All right, we have seven, so I'm going to go ahead and certify closed. So in order to comply with section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December 13th, 2022, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do we have a motion? Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Ms. Darnett Kofax, all those in favor? That is Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders, are you in favor? Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. Keith Kamara, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Bukowski, Ms. Omesh, and myself. Anyone abstaining? All right, that motion passes with Dr. Anderson and Ms. Marin away from the table.
All right.
Wait, wait, hold on, we have, that's okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I move to uphold the disciplined decision of a student that was discussed earlier this afternoon, this morning.
Seconded by Ms. Tolan, all those in favor? Ms. Tolan, that is unanimous with Dr. Anderson and Ms. Marin away from the table. I will now turn it over to Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. Ms. Marin has submitted a written request to virtually attend today's meeting due to a medical conflict. I will call for a vote for those Board members who are in person this morning. All in favor of approving Ms. Marin's request for virtual participation in the December 13th, 2022 closed, this is not correct, work session, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstentions? All right.
Thank you, and I just have a point of order, please.
In a moment, once I announce the vote. That is all in favor for those in the room with one abstention from Ms. Cohen and Dr. Anderson away from the table. Go ahead, Ms. Marin.
I'm sorry, Mr. Frisch, the vote that was taken about closed, I was not away from the table, I was abstaining.
Yes, I corrected myself mid-sentence.
No, but it was the, it was the vote that Ms. Seismar Heiser called for.
I would get some clarification, but I believe since we hadn't approved the virtual participation before the vote, we were not able to include you in that vote.
That's fine with me, perhaps clarification about what away from the table means might be helpful, but thank you, yes, so I did not vote in that one and could not vote for this one, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin, I believe away from the table means not present at the table.
Thank you.
We are going to go until 1:00 for our Career Pathways Report. And depending on where we land, we may go a little bit longer, since we started a little bit late, and endeavor to get us into our break for lunch as scheduled. And we will have our customary three minutes for comments and questions, followed by go-backs at two minutes, and we will do as much of that as we can fit in. This afternoon, we're joined by Sloan Presidio, Noel Kmenko, Jennifer Glazer, and Todd Franklin, and Whitney Ketchledge from FCPS, and Rudy Ruiz, Margaret Byrd, and Faith Connelly from Four Point Education Partners. Take it away.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Frisch, and good morning, everyone. We're very excited to be here and have the opportunity, along with our partners at Four Points Education Partners, to present the Career Pathway Study Findings. Dr. Ruiz is with us, and we also actually have Hugh Herman from Four Points with us today as well, and there's a lot of other folks from the division in the room with us as well to help address any board questions that you may have. I do want to say that, right off the bat, this report has been a long time coming, so we appreciate the Board's patience in receiving this report. But, you know, a lot of the work that needed to be done on this report was not able to be completed during the pandemic. A big piece of the report really involved, you know, classroom observations and interviews with individual teachers and focus groups, and, you know, it's very hard to do in a pandemic, you can't do a very good job observing hands-on instruction in a virtual class. So we appreciate your patience, and we definitely appreciate the persistence of Rudy and his team, as well as their collaboration in getting this report completed, and we're very excited to share it with you today. We will try to go through this relatively quickly, if we could pull the presentation materials up, but there is quite a bit of information here, because this was a very comprehensive report, so we're going to go ahead and, if you can move that back to the beginning, yep. So we're going to go ahead and talk about just the meeting outline for today. I want to provide a brief introduction and kind of a high-level overview of our current state of Career Pathways programming in FCPS. Then we'll have an opportunity to hear from Four Points in terms of the work that they completed, the findings and the recommendations that they have for us. And then Noel and I will provide some information in terms of staff recommendations based on the Four Points findings that we think could really promote greater access and opportunities for our students to career pathway experiences. And then lastly, of course, we'll have time for board questions and discussions. Just as a high-level reminder, we did ask Four Points Education Partners on this particular program to really focus on addressing issues of access and equity of access to our career programs. They did a great job with that, and you can see, I think, from the methodology that they used, they had a very comprehensive approach to this report. It included a lot of research, a lot of data analysis, and then a lot of direct stakeholder input and feedback, as I mentioned, interviews, surveys, class observations. So a lot of time and effort went into this report, and we really appreciate everything that they've done. I do want to start, though, before we hear from Four Points again, just to provide kind of a high-level summary of information about the current state of our programming. And I want to mention right up front that we're really going to focus today on high school programming. That doesn't mean that we're not committed to making additional enhancements and improvements to our elementary and our middle school programs, we certainly are, but really, the focus of this report was really at the secondary level. But we're continuing to provide exposure to career-related learning and occupational awareness to our students, even starting in elementary school, to really help them build awareness and identify interests in courses and pathways that they might want to explore at the middle school and the high school level. But today, we're really going to focus on high school programming. So when we talk about our career pathways in FCPS, we're really talking about those courses that have that career-related learning component to them, and those are courses that we often refer to as Career and Technical Education Courses, or CTE courses for short. And as you can see on the slide here, we follow the national model for career pathways, which, again, was noted in the Four Points study. And there are actually 17 different career pathways that are represented on this slide that we have programming availability in FCPS for. So, you know, our offerings are very broad, you know, it includes everything, as you can see here, from health sciences to hospitality, so a lot of different options and opportunities for students. And the Four Points study did point out that, in comparison to other large national districts, the amount of access that our students have really exceeds what is typically found in large districts. So we're very, you know, proud of the access that our students have, and, you know, more importantly, what they're able to accomplish when they participate in these learning experiences. In terms of accessibility of where these courses and these 17 different pathways are, there is variability, of course, across our different, you know, our different base schools. So a pathway availability at a particular base school is dependent on a lot of different factors, student interest, of course, being one, facilities and equipment availability, teacher expertise and availability at the schools. So to help really kind of inform at a deep level where our current status is, we did produce, and it's linked on this slide, an attachment that provides the enrollment by pathway, by course in the pathway, for every one of our FCPS high schools. So that is attached and posted on Board Docs. It's a rather lengthy document, but it gives you a better sense of the understanding of, you know, what's offered where and where there are some access and opportunity gaps for students. If a student is not able to access a particular pathway at their base school, we, of course, also have six academies in FCPS. And again, for the community that's listening, an academy is really just a center, a specialized center, at one of our base schools that offers really specialized instruction in technical education courses or other specialty courses, like in the arts, or in some cases, world languages. So we have six of those academy programs open to students in Fairfax. We've listed all of them here, along with the pathways that are available at each of those six academies. And when students access an academy, they stay enrolled at their base school, but they attend the academy for part-time enrollment, it could be one class, it could be more than one class, and they're able to take classes there for one or more years. So typically, students would have those experiences at a junior level, and they might continue some of those advanced learning opportunities as a senior. We do provide transportation when it's available. It doesn't always work out based on the schedules from the transportation departments, that's one of the barriers and challenges that we sometimes see, but we always endeavor to try to provide transportation from base schools to the academies. So, you know, before I turn it over to Rudy, I guess I would say, you know, while we have an awful lot of pathway learning opportunities available at our base schools and academies, we definitely recognize that there are equity and access opportunities for our students across the school division. Again, those things, those barriers could be, you know, student interest, it could be barriers, again, teacher availability to teach the courses, it could be the availability or lack of availability of facilities and equipment at a particular school. When it comes to academies, some of the barriers are just the geographic proximity of a particular program to a students' base school. Oftentimes, they might be interested in taking something that is, you know, on the other side of the county, and transportation wouldn't be available or feasible for that. So there's a lot of different challenges that present access issues for our students, and that was the primary reason that we engaged with Four Points, was to really explore, what are those barriers that our students have to our current programming, and to really help us with a better understanding of what we could do to close those access and opportunity gaps. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rudy for the next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio, for setting the stage. Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Board representatives, for the opportunity to share and discuss the findings of our review. As Dr. Presidio mentioned, it was a process that spanned two years as a result of the challenges presented by the pandemic. But throughout that time, the Counseling and College and Career Readiness Team led by Jen Glazer, with support from Noel Kmenko and Dr. Sloan Presidio, have been highly engaged with us, ensuring awareness and collaboration of this process and of this review with schools, departments, the Board, and the many FCPS community stakeholders. As Dr. Presidio mentioned, I'm Dr. Rudy Ruiz. After 16 years serving large school systems, and then as Chief Education Officer for the Maryland Business Roundtable for Education, I'm wrapping up my fourth year as Vice President and Partner with Four Point Education Partners. Our Four Point is based in Maryland, we've worked in 34 states with a number of recent and current engagements here in Virginia. I'm a member of the National Advisory Boards for the Johns Hopkins University School of Education, as well as the Center for Post-Secondary Readiness and Success at American University. In addition to currently working with a quarter of the districts in Maryland, my team and I are actively supporting more than a dozen school districts, as an example, in Texas, with planning new pathways in technology, early college, high schools, or P-Tech model schools. So we're very familiar with this space and appreciate the opportunity to dig in with the FCPS team and think about access and equity for these types of programs. On behalf of my team at Four Point, I want to thank the Board for dedicating this time for a work session that's focused on discussing this study on career pathways programming in FCPS. And as you may have seen on the cover page of our report, we enlisted a diverse team of subject matter experts, including leading practitioners and researchers from various parts of the country to conduct this review. Joining us this morning via Zoom are two of those team members, Dr. Faith Connelly, former Executive Director of the Baltimore Education Research Consortium, housed at Johns Hopkins University, as well as Hugh Herman, who is based in Florida and deeply experienced in CTE and other career readiness programming in PK through 12, as well as community and technical colleges. To help set the stage for this conversation, after a brief overview of the study, we'd like to share our key findings and recommendations. Over two years ago, FCPS set out to understand how well its career readiness programming, being newly referred to as Career Pathways Programming, aligned with the evidence base for effective, inclusive career development programming. Throughout these two years, these five questions have guided our ongoing investigation and conversations. As you can see from these questions, they were designed to help FCPS get a comprehensive view of students' access and success in career pathways programming, especially in comparison to the nation's other large districts, as well as to get insights on how to communicate effectively about high-value programming in ways that celebrate students' interests and success in these pathways. I'd like to ask my colleague, Dr. Connelly, to tell you a bit more about these methodologies.
Good morning, everyone. As has been mentioned, we collected a lot of data, and for the last year and a half, we've been analyzing things such as program availability, offerings, course offerings, access, enrollment, and then success. In addition, we've reviewed all documentation, talking about programs and policies, as well as speaking to a number of stakeholders, as you can see on the slide, from students to teachers to family members, CTE Advisory Committee members, school board members were included, and other community members, as well as business and industry partners.
Thank you, Faith. Dr. Presidio had mentioned another colleague, Margaret Byrd, she's a bit under the weather today, wasn't able to join me, but she and another colleague, Stephanie Ampanza, both of which have deep expertise in the career readiness space, both in school and out of school, were the ones who conducted our site visits and had the opportunity to come and meet with students and others in person for focus groups. Just to give you a quick overview in terms of how Career Pathways Programming is currently being delivered, we use this opportunity and the report to bring together the wide range of related offerings into one document, which we hope you find helpful. While not every FCPS high school student who experiences Career Pathways Programming does so through an FCPS academy, the academy model is the division's primary model and does align with the evidence base on the most effective models in the field. As I'll elaborate on shortly, and as you have discussed in other programming, especially at the academies, FCPS has some excellent career pathways offerings, as well as much higher outcomes, both in terms of proportions of students participating, as well as completion of relevant pathways and credentials than their national peer districts. At the same time, there are opportunities for FCPS to close current opportunity gaps by increasing support for particular student groups to participate and succeed in career readiness programming. I'd like to begin sharing our key findings and recommendations with the topic of perceptions of and access to career pathways programs. When we think about the metaphor of pathways, it's natural to consider how students, and importantly, their families, understand when and how to get started on available pathways. Though high school career pathway offerings may not necessarily have the same type of prerequisite requirements as some advanced academic offerings, it's clear that there would be great value in leveraging some of the division's investments in programming like Avid to help ensure that all students and families have sufficient information and sufficient time to have all the information they need to make informed decisions about academy and other high school offerings. We've been pleased to hear about some proactive steps that the division has been taking to give more middle school students exposure to these options. Our next topic is industry partner involvement. This is an area that I'd like my associate Hugh Herman to tell you more about.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you, Rudy. Here we saw the regional labor market analysis and heard in talking with members of the CTE Advisory Committee that there is incredible opportunity in information technology-related fields. Again, in terms of helping students and families understand these opportunities, there is a need and an opportunity to both expand and promote offerings, as well as help show how related offerings, such as computer science, which is sometimes categorized differently, connect to pathways from middle school to high school, dual enrollment, and then to post-secondary education, training, and career opportunities. More generally, when it comes to business and industry partners, the CTEAC members also express interest and have an FCPS dedicate more resources to help facilitate potential partnerships across a range of work-based learning continuum, including supporting students as well as teachers in the division.
Thank you, Hugh. Another topic that we'd like to discuss is ensuring that there are clear expectations of standards that tie together academic and career planning. It was great last week listening into your work session. We see great promise in the division's intentions to continue building on the foundations laid with the portrait of a graduate, which has been a great model for helping school communities better visualize, understand, discuss, and interrogate the purpose of their work, and to connect and align it with individual academic and career plans, or ACPs. When it comes to the familiar student question, why are we learning this, these two frameworks have the potential to help students see the so-called big picture, and to really take hold of and own their learning. Importantly, it also helps students better connect at key transition points, namely, the high school selection process and program and course enrollment. It can also help bring to life for students, student and school engagement with your division's electronic portfolio or college and career readiness platform, rather than what we find is often occasional or disconnected use in many other divisions. Importantly, we do want to address the opportunity to increase supports for particularly underrepresented student groups, namely, English learners and students with disabilities. Career pathways programming is often staffed by teachers with less formal teacher training, and career pathways programming often requires specialized technology, other equipment, and technical language. Compounded by other academic support requirements, this often leaves English learners with minimal access and success in such elective offerings. However, career pathways programming has been shown to help increase engagement and success in school and graduation and post-secondary outcomes. Investment and support staff for English learners, as well as students with disabilities, would yield clear returns. On this last topic, data collection and reporting for continuous improvement, we believe, again, this aligns with some recent conversations you all have had in other areas, and definitely touches on the issues of access and equity, being able to have a clear view of where you are and where you're headed. On this point, I'd again ask my colleague, Dr. Connelly, to elaborate.
Because I love data. One of the things we noticed is that, today, a lot of the reporting on career pathways program has been limited and focused on what is required by the Virginia Department of Ed. And while these reports are essential, they're basically static reports that are providing snapshots, usually annually, and are hard to use if you want to focus on improvement. So developing some system of clear, dynamic data reporting in ways that the data can be disaggregated across student groups, especially for intersectionalities, which would be looking at African-American males with disabilities or Hispanic females who are EL, would allow the division to look more deeply at how students are doing and how equity and access issues are impacting students by the smaller groups, and make sure that you can ensure access and success for all students. Rudy, thanks.
Thank you, Faith.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Ruiz, and the entire Four Point team who's here with us today, we really appreciate that. Obviously, posted on Board Docs, we have the full report that the team has provided, but we're trying to really focus today's discussion as much as we can for the Board. So if you bear with me just a little bit longer, I want to share some of the staff, specific staff recommendations that we developed as we reflected on the Four Points findings and recommendations. And one thing I want to point out as I do that, these are just initial ideas and recommendations. Obviously, we need Board input before we would pursue any of these, but equally as important, really, is we need community and business partner input. Everything that we do in our CTE classes, we rely on our business and industry partners to make sure that our programs are really aligned to industry standards and practices. And our Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, CTAC, is a really important partner in our leadership efforts around these programs, and we know that several Board members have either served on that committee or been Board liaisons to that committee, so more work certainly needs to be done there. But I do want to share some of the preliminary recommendations that we've developed as a staff, and I think when we start to really think about, you know, how we're going to create greater equity of access to career pathway opportunities, we've really got to start to make sure that we're making database, you know, recommendations and decisions. So we've provided a couple different data sets on this slide. In the first part, at the top of the slide, is really that workforce trend data and what we see in the Northern Virginia region. We work very closely with Northern Virginia Community College and the Economic Development Authority to track our workforce trend data over time, and this is just a snapshot, but you can see that, you know, there's a strong demand in the workforce for employees in cybersecurity and information technology, as well as hospitality management, health and human services currently in Northern Virginia. The next piece of data is just some high-level student interest data. And really, when we look at this data point, what we're looking at is the courses that students are selecting that have the longest wait lists. So there are wait lists associated with all of these courses, and there are a number of students that would love to have access to these, but we're just not able to offer them currently, based on staffing, facilities, equipment availability. So this is another, I think, data set that we really need to reflect on when we think about where and how we might expand access. So moving forward, I think looking at those two data sets together are really important, and when we do that, there's, at the bottom of the slide, three areas that we would really suggest that we prioritize our expansion efforts in within FCPS, and that's information technology, there's certainly a strong industry need there, education, there's a strong local FCPS industry need, as we all know, in our Teachers for Tomorrow program, and then health services, again, is a really key area where we've got student interest as well as industry demand. So just kind of keep those in the back of our mind as we look at our recommendations. On this slide, we've tried to summarize our recommendations, we have 12 overall, and we've broken them into short, midterm, and long-term categories. The short-term recommendations are really things that we think we could implement within a year or two. Midterm, probably two to three years, and longer term, we believe we'd need three or more years to be able to implement these and to do it well. So I want to walk you, just again, high-level through each of these recommendations. The first short-term recommendation that we have is to think about expanding our standard course offerings at our base schools in information technology and education, two of those key pathway areas that we think are essential for student success and for the Northern Virginia region. We do recognize that expanding these course offerings to all schools would take a significant investment in staffing, but having a pathway sequence that students could take, you know, multiple years, including a four-year pathway experience in information technology at each of our base schools, we think is something that would be a huge equity win for the division. Right now, there's a lot of interest, student interest, in those careers, and there's, you know, a lot of equity access issues, is that document that we've created, when you take a look at what's offered where. In terms of base school availability, you'll see a lot of gaps in that particular field. For education, Teachers for Tomorrow, we think is critically important, we've got Teachers for Tomorrow right now in 11 of our base high schools, so we're about halfway there. We're serving about 200 students, but we could fill hundreds of, you know, we hire hundreds of teachers every year, and we'd love to see more students entering the education profession when they leave FCPS and go to college, and then hopefully come back to FCPS and work with us here in our school system. So those would be two areas that we would really recommend expansion of base school course-taking opportunities in. The second recommendation is to really think about how we can expand access to some key courses, some key pathway courses through our online campus. We already have availability of some pathway courses through online campus, and we think expansion there is really an option for us in some key areas like government, public administration, which we don't have access there right now, health sciences, information technology and STEAM courses, as well as Teachers for Tomorrow. So again, the online campus, students do have the opportunity to take two classes free of charge at the online campus, they do not need to leave their base school to be able to do that. So that's another equity solution for students that are having challenges with accessing our academies because of the transportation issues and challenges. The third recommendation is to really think about prioritizing The third recommendation is to really think about prioritizing and hiring and retention incentives for teachers that are teaching in these specialized classes. It has become increasingly difficult for us to recruit and retain teachers in these fields. The compensation structure that we offer is not competitive to what they can get in the private sector. And if we could get closer to that and think about differentiated compensation, we think that we'd be much more successful in recruiting and retaining the teachers that are so critical for us to be able to even offer these pathway experiences to our students. The fourth and fifth recommendations in the short-term category really focus on increasing staffing and support to our English language learners and our students with I E Ps and five oh fours that are taking career pathway courses, particularly in our academy programs. We're staffed pretty well in our base schools, but when students go to the academy, they don't have the same level of support that they do have in their base schools. And being able to get that additional support and ensure their success in those courses, we think, is critical. The fifth recommendation is to really consistently implement the academic and career plan for students. That's something that starts in the elementary grades and then progresses up through the high school grades. And it's an opportunity for students to get exposure and career awareness to fields that they might be interested in pursuing after they leave us, as well as to set goals for themselves and to really inform their course-taking patterns. And that's something that is a tool that we do have and we utilize, but we're not doing it consistently across the division, and I don't think it's as impactful as it could be. So that would be another recommendation in the short term that would be pretty low-cost for us to be able to do. When we move to the midterm recommendations, thinking about things that would take between two and three years, the first recommendation that we have in this category is to really open up seats in our existing specialized programs that we have in our base schools. So again, there's variability between what's offered in certain base schools and what's offered in other base schools in terms of pathway programs. And when you look at the data in terms of what students are most interested in taking, they're interested in a lot of classes like the automotive program, the culinary program, the cosmetology program. Those are all things that take specialized instructors and require specialized equipment and specialized facilities. We're not going to probably have an automotive program in every one of our, you know, 25 base high schools, but we could create greater access by opening seat space to students from other base high schools to attend those programs in neighboring base schools. Similar to an academy structure, students would stay enrolled in their base school and have the opportunity to attend a neighboring school for those specialized programs. Similarly, the seventh recommendation we have is to do a better job basically utilizing technology to teach classes where students could be co-enrolled. So we might have an instructor in one physical location, but be able to use technology to expand virtual access to that class in other schools throughout the county. Now, that doesn't work in every pathway, of course, but we think there are some pathways where it would work, particularly in information technology, if we think about cybersecurity courses, for example, and some of the advanced computer science courses that we have. Those would be things that could be relatively easily taught in a virtual environment and open up greater access to students across the county. The eighth recommendation in the midterm category is to really think about the expansion of transition support services to students, particularly for students with disabilities. We know that this has been an issue. This has been a challenge, both as students transition from middle school to high school, but also as they transition from high school to a post-secondary educational experience or job experience. So we'd really like to see some additional supports be able to be provided to schools to support students in that manner. We do have two positions right now that are funded through ESER that are providing support. Those are our employment transition representatives, but we'd really love to see at least one of those positions per region to be able to provide that specialized training and support to our students. The next recommendation, number nine, is to think about really building the pipeline, I guess, if you will, really thinking about, you know, what can we do at elementary and middle grades to get exposure to some early career experiences for students? And we're recommending here that we think about in grades pre-K through eight, having computer science and STEAM in all of our schools. Specifically, one way that we could do that would be to have a resource teacher who specializes in that area in every one of our elementary schools. Fifty-three schools right now do have a position, but that means that, you know, almost 100 of our elementary schools do not have a position that's currently providing that type of exposure. And getting students' exposure to that type of information technology, computer science at an early age, we think, is critical because there's going to be a huge demand. I mean, there's a huge demand in those occupational fields now, but technology is going to create lots of jobs that don't even exist today for our students of tomorrow. So really getting the early exposure, we think, would be something that would, again, be able to address a lot of our equity issues and challenges. Moving on to the long-term recommendation, there's a couple different things here that we wanted to focus on. And again, here, we're thinking that probably it's going to take several years to be able to do some of these things, but the first would be to open additional academies. We have six right now. We could certainly open additional academies in existing base schools, but it would take time to do that, and it would mean really thinking about our capital improvement plan and making that expansion a priority as part of our capital improvement plan. So when a high school was on the renovation cycle, for example, we could really think about making sure that they had the facility space that they needed to offer pathways that are in demand, both for employers and for students. The second recommendation here is to think about creating kind of career pathway-focused high schools. So we haven't really done that too much in Fairfax. The closest thing that we have really is our Global STEM Academy at Edison High School and the new Lewis Leadership Program at Lewis High School. But other school divisions around the country have a focus in a broad array of areas. Even in Prince William, you know, our neighboring jurisdiction offers a lot of programs. So you could think about things like health sciences schools, information technology-focused school, arts and communications, you know, focused school. There's a lot that we could do with specialized focus area programs, I think, that would really engage and ignite student interest. And then finally, when we think about the opportunity to open new schools, and we have the ability to do that, we're recommending that we really think about that capital improvement project as an opportunity to continue to build our pathway experiences. So we've got a Western high school that's part of the C I P, and there's opportunities there, I think, to think about using that space to really open a specialized program, but also really thinking about using that space to offer another career and transition experience school like Davis or Polley, which is something that we would really love to have in the school division. So on the long term, kind of three things. We realize, again, that those recommendations are very budget-dependent, but they're things that I definitely think that we would want to consider. So that was our best attempt to go through that as quickly as we could. We want to turn it over to Mr. Frisch now for board discussion, and we certainly would love to hear any input that you have on any of those recommendations and priorities that you might have for us to explore those further. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We'll get started with our three minutes, opening comments and questions. Up first, we have Ms. Kies-Gamara, followed by Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Dr. Persidio. I really am grateful for this analysis, and overall, I agree with your recommendations, although I want to focus us a little bit on some overall concerns. I'll start with the document that's listing the high school programs. And on page five of that, you can see where our foreign languages have been offered in various parts of the county. Has there been an analysis as to where those programs should be offered, where the demand is, and how best to expand the availability of foreign language?
Yes, thank you for that question. With our world language programs, we've taken a few different approaches. One is really to let the community drive new programs that come into a school. So, for example, we've seen that with Chinese, we've seen that with Korean, where we really have the interest level from the community, so we know that we have students. I think people recognize when we're adding a world language, there's a couple things that happen. One is we have to ensure we're going to have enough students to complete the continuum so kids, students can meet their graduation requirements and hopefully, you know, go even beyond the three years, but into the A P or I B realm. We also have to realize that when we add a new language to a school, it typically means a language will leave a school. They just can't, they can't sustain every language. So one of the things we've been trying to do is utilize our online campus. And I know that people feel it's counterintuitive, it's hard to learn a language online, but that hasn't really proven to be the case. And over the past few years and with board support, we've added several languages. We've done it for high-demand languages like American Sign Language, where it's hard to find an instructor, and so it's really very advantageous to have it in the online campus. And we've also done it for thinking about, as we move forward, which languages are we moving away from that we're not being able to actually retain the student interest? An example of that might be German in the future, but we want to keep the language alive in our county. So we are continuing to always look at the world languages and see where they need to be and really to really think about what the student interest in the community would like to see at different sites.
Thank you. I do think we need to take a closer look at that. I know of some particular concerns arising that have led to overcrowding in a particular school. Parents typically think that we need to just add to the school, which is difficult. So I think if we have these discussions, we can have a fuller, the community can understand what the challenges are. I also think that there may be some languages that are more in demand. For example, there may be a move away from, I don't want to name anybody, get somebody angry with me, but there, you know, I'd like to know what those high-demand languages are. On page seven, it lists out what we're offering with respect to cyber. And if you look at the bottom, maybe third of that page, it's pretty lonely. There's probably three columns where these programs are. So I agree with the recommendation to expand this, but I'm also concerned about access. And you mentioned advocacy within a community. That typically can go with the, you know, just the, I don't want to go with the squeaky wheel, but also with parents who are available, where we want to make sure that we're offering opportunities to all of our students. So I look forward to a more specific conversation regarding that. And the next thing I have to, I want to look at is on page nine, which I think actually feeds into the problem on page six, and that's the availability of not just our STEM classes, but classes like A P Calculus, Applied Calculus, et cetera. And it's not quite as lonely as our cyber classes, but there is, there's a lot of space between which schools have it and which schools don't. And so I think we do need to have a specific conversation about the availability of advanced math and how early we can have those conversations. I'll stop and give you an opportunity to respond, so maybe I can...
The one thing I would comment about, you know, the A P Calculus, I think you have to pair that with the I B math offerings, because our I B schools would not be offering the A P Calculus. So we have those, they just don't have the similar names, so they don't stand out in quite the same way.
I still look forward to, and I'm going to need to go back, I look forward to the conversation that we've begun already, and that is how early can we make those higher skills in math available to our students in preparation for our kids being able to take advantage of those opportunities at the high school level?
No, absolutely. I appreciate that. And I would just say briefly on your other two points, the world language course offerings and program offerings, probably for the last 10 years, at least since I've been in the division, when we've been expanding programs, we've really looked to the government to tell us what are the strategic languages that the government has suggested that we need to be teaching and offering in our schools, right? So courses in programs in languages like Chinese, Arabic, Korean, right? Like, those are the programs that we've really added. The other thing that we've done is looked at heritage languages, right? So, you know, particular communities that, you know, maybe second-generation students don't have the opportunity to learn their language and develop the same proficiency because they've been raised, you know, in the American school system with English is the primary language. So we've looked at, you know, again, programs like Vietnamese, right, to add those heritage languages where there's interest, you know, from the students and the families to get students those experiences. So that's how we've addressed world languages. And then your point, I think, on, you know, the cyber and the computer science classes, that's really what we're hoping that, if not today, soon, is the system we could identify, like, what are the core courses that the board would really like to see offered consistently across all of our schools with respect to career and technical education and pathway courses? We know schools can't do everything the same, right? We've got 17 different pathways, there's a lot of challenges, but there could be a core set of courses that we want to make sure are offered to all students. And, you know, based on the work that we did with Four Points, staff are really recommending that, you know, computer science, information technology be one of those areas.
I hope we can get recommendations from you for those core classes, I think, would help.
Well, that is my recommendation, is to have those information technology, computer science pathways available in every school. We have courses in each of those pathways, then, that we would work with the schools to make a standard course offering. So that's kind of what we're recommending doing.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara. Just to move the conversation along, we are going to have staff timed at two minutes. That's not to cut off your answers, just to let you know where you are in terms of how much time you're using. And I had a little mistake in the order, so we're going to go Ms. Corbett Sanders and then Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your hard work on this. It's a long time coming. Although I am a little concerned, because in looking at your charts for what's available at high schools, I'm not sure that Mount Vernon High School's course offerings are fully reflective, because it doesn't reference any of the courses that were launched as a formal pathways program in January of 2020, where we had the presidents of George Mason University and Northern Virginia Community College as a very big focal point. And so, A, they need to be reviewed, and B, where is the commitment to that program that was very intentional based on the needs of that community? The second thing is, and it also doesn't include some of the hospitality courses that I know are available at that school. Fully support your career pathways initiative starting in elementary school. It's something that I've advocated for a long time, and I actually think we need to have those transition discussions between sixth and seventh grade, between eighth and ninth grade, and continuing on, senior year, what's next? Finally, the early, as going back to the discussion regarding Mount Vernon High School, we, at that time, had early college offerings as a key part of that. And so that was a commitment that this system made, and I'd like to see where we're at and how we can actually honor the commitment that this system made. Finally, regarding the STEAM, or two other things, regarding the STEAM resource, I think that's really important. I actually think that that STEAM resource teacher should also be responsible for mathematics, because we do not have a math resource teacher at every one of our elementary schools. I fully support your making more available. My big concern is, where at the high school level of career and technical education, where are we going to get the staff? And so one of the things that I would like you to explore is to actually partner with the Chamber of Commerce. And we got changes made at the state level to allow for dual enrollment courses in the specialized fields to be coming from industry leaders so that they could spend time, one or two courses, and we should look at somehow addressing those high-tech, high-needs areas. And then my last is, what's the process for review of, you know, of all these courses? And how often? And how do we make it a systematic process that has us looking at these courses and the market, and then addressing and adapting as needed?
So thank you for those comments. A couple things I would say, and I appreciate all of your collaboration and advocacy over the years for advancing career and technical education in Fairfax. You've been a great partner and certainly a great advocate, particularly for Mount Vernon High School. So we'll go back and we'll take a look, and we'll refresh this document if we missed any courses. I do want to point out, this document is not intended to list, like, every advanced level course, every dual enrollment course. It's really meant to take those courses using the national model in these 17 different pathways and identify the sub-courses that are associated with those particular pathways. So we have advanced math in here, because that's associated with some of our pathways in computer science and STEM, for example. But we don't have all of our dual enrollment course offerings in here, because they're not necessarily mapped to a certain pathway. But we will definitely go back and refresh and update the document to make sure that it's representative, fully representative of the pathways. You know, I think the course review process is something that we do, we have a process for that on an annual basis that we go through. And like I mentioned earlier, we do work with Northern Virginia Community And like I mentioned earlier, we do work with Northern Virginia Community College. We work with the Economic Development Authority to really track and monitor what those workforce trends are and to try to keep our curriculum and our offerings as relevant and timely as possible. And we certainly rely on C-TAC, again, to help us with that process. And we do that on an annual basis, present those recommendations to the board each fall for the following year's offerings. So I think in terms of offering new standardized courses, this would be something that we would want to engage in further discussion with the board. What would you like those standard offering expansion opportunities and priorities to look like for the following school year? So that's another next step, I think, for us in that process.
And the staffing question, working with the chamber and-
Well, that's something that we continue to try to do. And again, you've been very helpful in that regard, reaching out to trade associations and the like. The chambers, it's challenging here. I mean, again, this is one of the things we've tried to do. We haven't had a lot of success with that, but it's something I think that's a great recommendation for us to continue to double down on and continue to try to work on.
Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Pekarsky.
Yeah, I think we do need to look into the staffing piece, though, because I agree that what we were told happened on the state level does not seem to have translated into, my understanding is you still need a master's degree to be able to teach in our dual enrollment. Is that accurate?
So that is accurate. We never had a state policy change with respect to teacher certification. That's something that we're still working with the state on, is to get more flexibility. Some of Ms. Corbett Sanders' comments is that we were working very closely with Nova and George Mason to strategically try to get instructors from the community college or higher ed level to work in our schools. And that is something that, you know, we've had some success with, not the success that I think some of us had hoped for. So that, again, is an area for continue, I think, collaboration and work.
I also wanted to ask, you know, I, of course, my frustration in looking at this list is the same thing I've brought up probably 100 times. When you look at all of our alternative schools and Burke in particular, I don't even see Keen Kilmer Centers on here. These kids have nothing, nothing. And we know that they're kids who sometimes struggle with academic success. Kids at all of these alternative centers, some of them are there by choice and some of them are not. And so I do, I continue to argue that this is criminal, that we place kids at schools where they don't have any access to this offering. It, I, anyway, it's very frustrating. I do think this also hearkens back to, I read in the report, I appreciated what you said about the advanced diploma. I will tell you, the advanced diploma is shopped to parents as, you can do this, everybody's doing this, every school wants to see this, or you could maybe settle for the standard diploma. That's how, and maybe that's not, I recognize that may not be the intent, but I will tell you, as a parent actively in this process, that is 100% when you go to parent night, right as freshman year starts, this is how it's delivered. And the constant conversation is, don't do anything that would make you not, your child not be eligible for the advanced diploma. Like, don't make those decisions early because you don't want to cut off. And as somebody whose kid is not an applicant, not a good fit for an advanced diploma, man, I wish we would have known that earlier because we pushed a kid into three years of language, all kinds of things that were absolutely not the right fit. So not only having those conversations with case managers, with IEP teams, but honestly, look at the presentation that parents get on that freshman back-to-school night or whatever because that is not how it's sold. An advanced diploma may be wonderful for kids who want to do different things, but I would argue there are a ton of kids, and I think you really referenced that in this report, for whom that is not the best path. And sitting in three years, languishing in Latin for three years for a kid who wants to do culinary sciences is just dumb. And so how do we, and that's on us as a society, too. I'm not giving this solely at your feet, right? We need to be able to have those conversations as a community because I recognize a lot of the pushback you've gotten is exactly the opposite.
Well, I really appreciate those comments. We want to make sure that students are well aware and families are well aware of all the choices and options and opportunities that they have in Fairfax, right? That's our mission, that's what we should be doing, and I think we all recognize we need to do a better job of that. So I appreciate you elevating that. One of the things, while those recommendations that I presented didn't get as specific as you got, one of the ways to do that is through the academic and career plan, right? If we do that process with fidelity, that is making everything very transparent to students and families in terms of what their choices and opportunities are and what the implications of some of those choices are, right? If you choose one thing, that means you might be closing the door on something else. So you need to be really thoughtful about that, and we need students and parents to really understand that and not just rely on, you know, one individual perhaps in the school who's helping them make those decisions. So that is something that we recognize we need to do a better job in, so thank you.
Yeah, 13 years in the school system, I don't know what a lot of these things are, to be candid with you. The CPP program, I've never heard of that. I'd love a go back, but I just have to say, if we don't know it here, something's going wrong.
Thank you. Ms. Pekarsky, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, thank you. I just, I want to start with some of my just kind of basic questions after reading all of this. You talked a little bit about IB and the offerings at eight schools, and did I read correctly that out of those, we have 408 students who actually go on and receive their diplomas? Can you talk a little bit more about that data?
Noel's checking that right now. If you want to keep going, and then we'll come back to that one.
Okay. All righty. Another question was about the college partnership program. The way it was, I also had never heard of this. I don't know where, what schools it exists. But something that I did read was that it seemed as if the responsibility was on the kids to seek information about it and to be part of it. Is that the way that functions? Because that was how it was presented in the report.
I think, I think it would be a program that is advertised at the schools that have the program, and kids do apply for it and become part, and, yes. So it's not, when I say it's on the students, I mean, it's not, it's not a secret, but it is something that they do seek to be part of.
Okay. I mean, I guess for, I guess my comment on that is for a program like this, leaving the onus on the students, I just think we probably are missing out on kids who could really benefit from it. So that would be just a very high-level comment on that. And I think it actually applies to a lot of these things that we're reading, just how much responsibility the students have to actually seek, figure out interests, and be very proactive. And we know that a lot of times, kids actually need encouragement. So, anyway, the surveys that were done for the students, did we have the disaggregated data for how many ESAL students replied? How many special education?
I'm actually not sure about that. Let me turn to my team over here. Oh, Four Points, do you all know if you have the disaggregated?
The survey data is in Appendix B, and so we do have some breakouts. The response rates were definitely variable in a number of ways, including by student group. And so for part of that reason, you know, that was, that informed kind of the balance of how much the survey responses were considered to be representative. And it was deemed that they likely were not representative. We had quite variable response rates, even at the school level.
Yeah. I don't think it was disaggregated for what I'm looking at, but to your point, that's actually kind of exactly my point. Where one of the first recommendations is to increase awareness and visibility, but then our survey data is so limited. We pay all this money to have external, you know, folks come in and do these. It seems it would be so easy for us to say, okay, we have advisory, please take five-minute students and take this survey. Because I think the information that we would get out of it would just be so much more helpful to what we need, that it's just a little bit frustrating to read that because key finding, you know, was increase the awareness, but to whom and why? And how do we know that some are? And I think that is a crucial aspect of this, having had several kids go through the system, having worked with the PTAs to try to elevate this. Because through the years, I was learning so much as a parent that I didn't know existed. And, you know, we were trying to help to find ways to make sure that others know. My time is coming to an end. Do you have an answer to the IB? Yeah, okay. I don't want to go down another path, but if you want to. Anyway, the Western High School, I'm a little bit worried about some of the recommendations that say increase some of these offerings in base schools, not because I don't think that's a good idea, or, you know, this Western High School, but because we have space issues. So where exactly will all these new courses go? Does that mean we get rid of other ones? And, you know, the ends, the bookends of the county, I think are really hard when you're looking to put some of these types of programs. I don't know that that's the best location for these. So that's just, I would love, and I have more, so I'll take the go back, but I'd like to hear.
You had a lot of-
Sorry, I know.
No, no, you had a lot in there, so I can't respond to all of it. So I'll do a couple, and then maybe on a go back, we can go to some other things. The Western High School recommendation is to really just be very thoughtful as we design that in terms of what programmatic elements we want to have in place. We're not making any assumptions about what should go in there. We're saying that's an opportunity for us to do another academy, to put in a specialized focus program, be it, you know, arts and communication, information technology, right? Similar to the Lewis Leadership Program. There's a lot of options that we have when we think about that school, and we need to have some direction really from the board about what your priorities would be as we start to think about, you know, design and construction issues as that timeline gets closer. So that would be the first thing. The other thing you said, which I think is really important, is, you know, if we offer new courses, what does that mean for courses that we offer right now? So there's two, two main ways to think about adding new programming and adding new courses. One is to say, student interest will drive what's offered at the school. And if students sign up for something that we haven't offered before and we choose to offer that, that means they're not signing up for something else, and that program is going to have to be consolidated or closed. That's oftentimes a very difficult decision because we don't end up with everybody saying they don't want to do this other program. There's always some people who still want to do that other program. And we have to think about how to serve and meet their needs, right? The other way to do program expansion is to say, this program is so critical that we're going to provide basically line item funding for the school to offer this new program and hold the other staffing and the other programs harmless. The downside of that is it's very, very expensive. So when we presented the recommendations in the slides, we put some associated dollar costs in there. Those were looking at holding schools harmless from a staffing standpoint to kind of give you, again, what would a worst-case scenario look like if we were to implement some of these new programs and hold staffing and other programs harmless? But understanding that dynamic, I think, is really important because as a former high school principal, closing programs was the most difficult thing that I ever had to do. So I'm not saying we don't do it or shouldn't do it, are ways that we can mitigate the impact, but it's always a challenge.
And be careful with student interest because sometimes it has to do with-
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry. I do want an answer to my IB question, which I never got to go down without.
And I can give you that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Your question was, was the 400 number correct for the number of diplomas? And it is correct. We have thousands of students who engage in IB coursework, but that would be the number of diplomas earned.
That's very helpful. I'll do the rest when I go back.
In two seconds, I do want to say on that because this is another miscommunication point, I think, and myth that sometimes is in the system. We appreciate and respect and admire the students who earn the full IB diploma, and that is not the end goal of the IB program, right? So we're not telling everybody, the end goal is you have to earn this diploma, and you have to test in six subject areas, and you have to limit your choices in terms of courses that you select. The value in the diploma is the interdisciplinary nature and the ways that they develop the students' attributes, similar to our portrait of graduate attributes. And we encourage students to take as many IB courses as they want to that fit into their ultimate career and post-secondary plan.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pekarsky. Up next, we have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Seismarheiser.
I'll just preface that we're all racing to try and speak in a comprehensive way about this, so we'll do our best. Number one, on rec. number seven, I did not see the raw data that shows the wait lists for saying, you know, because of our demonstrated waitlist, this is what we're going to recommend. So if you can point me to where in the appendices or where in the report, but I did not find that there, and if it's not there, then we need it.
Yeah, they're actually, this is data that was reported to us by the academy administrators. So we did not have raw data. It's not something that has been collected year after year. So I want to be clear that it is more historic. I think it speaks a little bit to the data needs that they were speaking of, to have a system that collects that over time so we can be more thoughtful.
I really appreciate that. Dr. Reed, I got to tell you, there's no way as a board member, I'm going to greenlight a plan if we don't have raw data to demonstrate what these waitlists are. I mean, I appreciate what's reported up from the school buildings, but we've got to make data-driven decisions. Rec. number nine, I was a little unclear on what was said, but I'm just going to go with what was on the PowerPoint slide. 141 schools would need a STEAM resource teacher at the tune of 15 million annually. I'm going to look straight at Ms. Pekarsky because many of us on this board have been middle school start time advocates. And, like, I just really appreciate this report overall, I absolutely do. And I'm not trying to pit one need against another, but Dr. Reed, I got to tell you, I hope for the sake of the children in this county, that if we're looking at where, what's mission-critical and driving the health and well-being of students, there's no way I'm going to greenlight a resource teacher at elementary schools while we have left middle school start times unfixed in this county. I mean, that, the other thing that I would say is, I would like to consider piloting rec. number nine and see how do the STEM resource teachers actually produce the results we want, because that is a lot of positions to add. And frankly, we have constantly said how we want to keep adding this resource teacher and that resource teacher to school buildings. I've yet to ever see a study that comes back and says, when we added this resource teacher, this is what we saw in the gains of student achievement and overall benefit. I'm not saying that resource teachers don't do that, but again, from a data-driven perspective, we've got to be measuring what we do and positions cost. And we have our teachers telling us that one of the reasons they're leaving the profession is workload. And what is workload driven by? The number of students in your classroom. So this is a really exciting report. I don't want to sound like the wet blanket. I will finally say that it's a long time coming for 21st century education in one of the wealthiest advanced counties in the country. So, Dr. Reed, I think this plays well to why we hired you, that we want to reimagine what a quality education looks like. And obviously, I'll need a go back. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments. Just a few things that I would say. One, with respect to how these recommendations are formulated, please note that we recognize that we're not in a financial position to do all of these things, or to do all of these things, or even many of these things right now, right? This was our attempt to say, what are some of the most pressing equity of access issues that we think we have? And what are some solutions? Not the only solutions, but some solutions to address those. So with respect to the STEAM resource teacher, we do have 53 schools who have those positions right now and many schools who don't. So from an equity standpoint, what that means is those schools that don't have that, they're not getting exposure to the same types of learning experiences, whether it's engineering, whether it's robotics, whether it's coding, right? Like, they're not getting exposure at least at the same level as students in other schools are getting. I think you make some really critical points and raise some really good questions about how do we fix that, right? And I'm not saying we have the perfect answer for it, but that's how that recommendation and why that recommendation is formulated that way. So we recognize that the board is going to, you know, be challenged to figure out what from these recommendations, you know, what would we prioritize and what should we do in terms of giving staff direction? I don't expect that to come today. I think the strategic planning process is one place where some of that might come. There's other ways that we could do that. So this is really just the initial kind of brainstorming and discussion phase. We're not asking for, you know, anybody to greenlight a particular initial recommendation or preliminary suggestion at this point, so thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Seismarheiser, followed by Ms. Tolan.
Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work. I'm going to try to rush through my many, many comments that I have here. But first of all, I would love to put out on the table, we talk about the advanced diploma as kind of a limitation. Advanced diploma is an FCPS-created diploma. It's not a state-created diploma, is my understanding. Am I- Am I... It's a state, but we, but in terms of what we...
What's in the requirement?
Yeah, what's in the requirement, right? That's what I mean.
Yeah, it comes from the state.
Okay, just want to make sure about that, because that's, there's some, I'm wondering if there's some advocacy at the state to create multiple pathways to an advanced diploma, right? That would allow for, you want an advanced diploma, here's one pathway, here's another pathway. Because that seems to me that would open the space for what we're talking about. So that's something to put out for a state advocacy. I want to talk a little bit about your special education part of this report. I was really surprised in the appendix, when you list the programs, that Davis Center, I mean, Ms. Cohen mentioned all the different ones, but Davis Center has a culinary program. It wasn't listed in the report. So I was just a little surprised to see some of that. What I'm trying to say about that is that I would also like to look a little deeper. I was surprised not to see this as all of the reasons for lack of access, right? We talk about transportation. We don't want to dig into whether that's the main barrier. We talk about staffing support, right? But we don't talk about, and in, somewhere in one of the appendix, it says that, I think, 81% of the high school students said lack of place in their schedule is why they don't access these, and that we don't talk about with special education and EL students in particular, and because we take away their electives in the special education students. And that's nowhere in this report. So I just was curious if you had looked at sort of, for special education students in high school, the things that they have to give up in order to get some of the needs met.
We have looked at that, and I apologize for not mentioning it. Again, we were trying to go a little bit faster to save a little bit of time for board discussion, and I skipped over that. We did intend to have that discussion in our presentation. So that's definitely a limiting factor, and something that we need to continue to look at. I like your advocacy around multiple pathways to an advanced diploma. I think that would help some of the issues that we're discussing right now. And with respect to Davis and Poly, we didn't really put those in terms of, you know, those are not programs that are open to all students, where a student could pupil place into that, like an academy or specialized program. That's why we didn't include them in the same way here.
That's great. I'd like to pick, and I appreciate that clarification. I would like to pick up on that, because I think one of the things I would have loved to see in this, when you talk about access for special education students, is programming, the way Davis and Poly are programmed, that prevent access for those students who might be able to go to an academy for one block schedule. I think that's a huge barrier for some of our students. I didn't see anything else in here about WAT and EFE as part of career pathways, and whether there's possibilities of expanding those. But I would have just loved to see something about WAT and EFE in this report.
Yeah, and again, we didn't, we didn't get into some of the more specialized programs. What we did include in the report was the focus on making sure that when students go to these specialized classes, either at their base school, or more importantly, at the academy, that they have the appropriate levels of support. So we mentioned that for students with IAPs, students with 504s, and students who are English language learners. The other thing that we included in the report is the creation of more programs like Davis and Poly, and really considering, again, using the capital improvement plan, to think about where we could locate additional programs to serve more students, because, again, our students don't have, I mean, there's more demand than what we can really serve through Davis and Poly.
No, I appreciate, and I did see about Davis and Poly, and there was a mention of WAT in here, but really digging into how those help provide access for, when we talk about students with disabilities, I just didn't see a lot of digging into what prevents those access, right? Like, for example, is creating more Davis and Poly without looking at the model the best way for our students to access some of our skilled programs and academies? And I would argue, no, right? I think the model needs to be looked at. So that's just, I want to put that on there. I also want to talk about the 15 million that Ms. McLaughlin also mentioned in terms of STEAM teachers. I have a recommendation in here about industry partners. I think we should marry that a little bit. I looked at what Nashville does, and as you mentioned, Denver. I think exploring industry partnership in an area as rich as this in partnerships to provide some of that might be beneficial. So I was surprised not to see some conversation about that.
Again, I don't want to be cynical, and I guess I'll take responsibility, you know, as one member of the leadership team, for not being able to initiate more of those partnerships. But I will tell you, I've tried really hard for 10 years to do that. I've been to chambers. I've presented at the Economic Development Authority many times. We've really tried to bring in industry partners to do things that I was able to do in other places that I worked around the country, right? For whatever reason, FCPS has not been successful with that, and I have not been successful with that. That doesn't mean we stopped trying. I think we have a new superintendent, right? I mean, we have some new opportunities, a new strategic plan in front of us. We need to keep trying to do it. But that's largely why we didn't include some of that information in the report. So, but it's, I mean, it's definitely an opportunity if we could figure out how to get it done.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Maron.
Thank you for the report. I definitely support the recommendations that you have. I have talked previously about using technology and online courses and created ways to access the high school, the base high school seats, I think is a really good way to look at some of these programs that we already have, and help us circumvent the transportation problem that, you know, and the data that, you know, four points spread forward. I think that was something, you know, we kind of already knew that transportation is an issue for our students to get to these great programs. I also very interested in the three workforce areas that you identified. I had a couple of questions on, you know, the Teachers for Tomorrow, where we're really trying to build our own workforce. Fully support that. I'm wondering if, is early childhood something, early childhood education something that you might be looking at as well? Because I think that we're going to have demand for that. And kind of along those same lines, under Health Services, does that include behavioral health pathways and courses?
And the short answer is yes to both of those. So within each of these 17 pathways, there are a variety of courses that are associated with that. So, right, so under the education pathway, you know, Training and Teaching for Tomorrow, you know, those programs are part of it. Early Childhood Education is another, you know, course-taking experience underneath that pathway, similar for Health Services, physical and mental and behavioral health. Now, it's harder to do some of the mental and behavioral health with high school students, but yes, that's part of it.
Okay, because that's definitely a need that we have in the area. I wanted to ask, Rudy, around some of this, in our Teachers for Tomorrow, or we have a Trades for Tomorrow program as well. One of the things we're really trying to do is incentivize our students to come back, you know, and work in Fairfax County. And along those same lines, too, and you talk about this in the report, paid internships for our students are, you know, what most, our students really need. In the work that you've seen around the country, how are people working with those incentives? How are they funding the internships?
Very timely question, of course. I think one bridge between those two concepts, one of which is, of course, grow your own, and then the other is this work-based learning with respect to education, to your question, is the growth of teacher residencies and opportunities for new funding from both public and private supports. So new federal funding supports around teacher residency model, excuse me, and oftentimes, state-level support as well, that could help bring the apprenticeship model, not only to education, but other sectors that aren't usually considered to be prospects for an apprenticeship model. So I think that's a strong one right now in the field. And then I think in terms of other sectors, a little less so, education, to Dr. Presidio's point, engaging the industry partners in helping them to understand what is the value proposition can get them more to the table to consider some of the other work-based learning opportunities, like internships to be, to be paid.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There were a lot of great ideas that were in the report, starting on page 18. I think some of these we've looked at already. Like, I've been getting advertisements from PTech, for example, for, I don't know, 10 years or something. Are these, did we look at some of these, that four-point spread up? And are they things that we've decided not to pursue?
I don't really want to make excuses, but I mean, I do want to at least recognize some of the realities that we've faced. We've had, in my tenure here, some discussions about some of these things. If you look at the current version of Strategic Plan, we've talked about, you know, high school pathways and creating more flexibility for students in career pathways. We've worked to try to expand the academy model and put more courses in the academy. And we've been largely limited by, you know, budget constraints to be able to really do some of the things that we had signaled that we would like to do. So, again, I don't want to make excuses, but it's not like we haven't had some of, some of these discussions in the past. And it doesn't mean that we haven't tried to do some of these things. We've just been very limited. I think we added, like, 10 FTE to the academy programs in the 10 years that I've been here, right? I mean, that's almost nothing when you think about the growth in some of these fields in terms of student interest, so.
Yeah, especially as we're really trying to expand our work-based learning. I mean, that's intensive, just the organization of that. So I could see how we would need people for that. One thing I did want to mention in the priority listing is I would advocate for moving up the priority of the transition services, particularly for our special needs students. But just for students in general, I think that it might tie in with this academy and career plans work that we're doing, you know, with younger kids, and then moving them up through, you know, the courses and everything that they need through middle school and then into high school. So I would definitely support that. I was a little curious about, you have in here this cross-functional working group. I think that was one of your recommendations, to tie in the POG stuff as well. Can you talk us a few minutes about how that might work?
Yes, thanks so much for that opportunity. So oftentimes, we hear and use the metaphor of silos in education, especially, of course, in larger systems. And so we were glad to see the good foundations that have been laid, both with POG and with ACPs. We see that this opportunity, both the report and the discussion, and I think your strategic planning process as well, provides an opportunity, not only for students and families, but the community, to see how these pieces can come together coherently. And so, given that that work does need to tie across offices, across departments, and across committees, in your case, we think it's important to have representation from those different stakeholder groups come together and make sure that there is alignment and cohesion and coherence.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Maron, followed by Ms. Amish.
Hi there. Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Yeah, sorry, I can't join. I've got the alcohol going around. So this is so exciting. I've been chomping at the bit for this report, and I think that it really strikes the right tone with offering management's recommendations. I love this format. I love it for this meeting and other meetings with the dollar amounts attached to them. I think it's really helpful for the board to have that thinking. And I think something that's really coming to mind here is, you know, what are we doing about building a practice in the school division, of it being natural and expected, to sunset programs that no longer serve students? And we're doing this right now with Science of Reading, right? We're saying that something worked for a time, but something better is here, let's move there. So when I look at these recommendations, I love that they're prioritized. I'm just trying to pull it up, right? So information technology, Teach for Tomorrow, and Computer Science. I mean, just in the last few weeks, I've been in conversations about each of these things. And I love that the recommendations are about the base school, every high school. That's, I think, how we start to close these inequitable paths that we have. The other thing that I want to, you know, then again, say is, you know, it's insane, we have to meet the needs of learners, but we can't be all things to all students. So how do we build economies of scale? So again, I think investing in the Computer Science, Teach for Tomorrow, and the IT is really what it's about. But I also think it's about how we communicate it, as always. So I saw somewhere, you know, it said the funds, you know, the part of the budgeting amount was the funds to recruit staff and communicate to staff and excite them. Well, we need to have that for students as well. I was looking through some of the charts, and when it lists emergency management services as law enforcement, well, perhaps it's more appealing if it's listed as public health services. How are the decisions being made in how to group these offerings? Automotive tech, can we call it automotive computer sciences? And it's actually listed under IT, knowing that our cars and we're computerized. So that's something I would love to see staff run more with. The question, I'll follow up on Ms. Bukarski's, about IB, you know, 408 diplomas out of, you know, in one year. Is that a reasonable return on the investment? What's the goal of this program? If it's the diploma, is that reaching whatever goal we set? Same with world language. What are we trying to achieve by offering this? Is it for everyone? Is it for some? I think the staff really needs to set goals, and then, you know, report to the board about what the money is getting. I also loved the Nashville partner, and I'm watching the clock, I got, thank you for that, the Partnership Nashville. I haven't heard a lot in the presentation and report about partnerships, and that's okay, because I know we're talking about what we're offering. But I think something more robust, you know, the report talked about expanding the C-Tax role. People want to be part of what FCPS is doing, but we need something more facilitated and structured to let them know where to go and how to engage. Thank you.
Any response?
Well, first, I would just say, thank you for the enthusiasm about the report and the compliments. That's definitely much appreciated. And I think you're picking up on some similar themes that we've heard, just around communications, marketing of the programs, and partnerships as areas of emphasis for us to do some more work on. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Amish, followed by Ms. Darren Kofax.
Thank you. And thank you to our team and our partners for the work. I guess, you know, Dr. Ruiz, Dr. Connolly, Mr. Herman, and whoever else might be with us. Just overall, right? So this was a lengthy report. Your recommendations were a little bit broad. What's screaming at you? I mean, staff has had the opportunity to do their own look, but you guys have been studying this now for over a year. What is your next step? I mean, what's the most important thing, you know, to Ms. Seismarheiser's points earlier, right? What are the reasons for lack of access? I mean, I think a lot of us are really interested in that question. I'd love to hear kind of what the top liners are.
I think Dr. Presidio just mentioned, but one area I'd like to reiterate, that maybe hasn't stood out as much, is the communications component. I think in terms of a system, in terms of offerings, and even outcomes, somewhat generally, again, we were pleasantly surprised by the availability of high-quality offerings and the outcomes for a division this size. But I think, even if we think about FCPS as perhaps having developed some ways, some thoughtful ways to have gone from good to great, I think the question that, of course, you all still want to understand is, how do we, how do we move to the next level? And I think the next level is, of course, about inclusive excellence. And so I think for us, it was difficult to give a lot of fine-tuning responses to your question, partly because, again, the data is not available the way you need it to be, to be able to dig in and understand what are some of the challenges. Because the challenges that we noticed are, they get down to the school level, they get down to the program level, and they get down to the student group level. So the answer to the question for one student group and one program at one school is going to be quite different than another student group in another program at another school. And so there are a number of different answers that you will find once we, once you begin strengthening kind of the data collection and reporting system. And so that's going to be a huge step forward in being able to get to that next level.
Can you elaborate on what you mean by that?
Yes. I think Dr. Connolly used an example or two previous, but, for example, if we wanted to know, in terms of, let's say, IT programming at a particular high school, the access may be an issue of advising. And so there might be, for example, a high proportion of African-American young men in the program, but perhaps almost no Hispanic young men in the program. So we need to be able to dig in and see what those access levels are for each program, because in some cases, there's a high levels of participation of a particular student group in one program, and then not another. And so we need to be able to dig in and understand, understand those issues better. And right now, there's not a dynamic reporting system to be able to really clearly have those pieces stand out. And with the vast number of offerings and, you know, your diverse population, you want to make sure that you have, have that information on hand, and aren't having to look at data that is a year or two-legged. You want to be able to make mid-course corrections as needed to solve some of these issues.
Yeah, sorry, the intersectionality part she mentioned earlier, yeah. I guess beyond demographics, though, I'm wondering, like, even regionally, looking at, even just this chart, like, what takeaways from that, right? Based on your qualitative and quantitative research.
So going back to the earlier question about other models, you know, whether the division has looked at other models, I'll use the example of, you know, again, the 10 districts that we're supporting with PTech planning currently. Some of the big pieces there, in terms of early college... Some of the big pieces there in terms of early college offerings and access and industry partnerships and work-based learning, some of those pieces are already here in terms of dual enrollment and other early college programs and work-based learning. And so a lot of the pieces are here. And again, in terms of, going back to the point about communications, for families that are familiar with different programs and offerings and have, you know, relatively easy access, participation is great, outcomes are actually really great for those who participate, but it does seem like there's a lack of awareness, and we want to make sure that it's really easy to understand what's available. And I think the comment was made earlier in the meeting about how, even within this room, a lot of what's available is not necessarily, you know, clear or known. And so I think just making it easy for families to understand what's available.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to reclaim my 15 seconds or so that we're running. But, yeah, okay, so I guess then perhaps the focus of today really, I mean, so Dr. Presidio, thank you all for the recommendations. I think this is great, and is a great model for future, you know, work when we look at future, where are we going from here? Which kind of leads me to think, all right, what am I going to prioritize out of these? I'm kind of inclined towards what's really more justice-related, if you will, of these recommendations. One being, you know, four and five, I think that the pipeline this could offer for special ed and English learners, expanding, because that's where we start to think about it as, how can we leverage this to improve academic achievement, student motivation, right? Investment in school. Those are areas where we see major gaps and therefore major opportunity. I'd advise, or I'd prioritize that. The other piece, though, is I kind of want us to shift our focus maybe in not even big-picture thinking, specifically in how we track interest and then how we develop a pipeline for kids getting into this. Because, you know, right now, it might not be that the program is broken. Sure, we can always expand, you know, add courses, add this and that. That's all wonderful and important, but if we're not, if that pipeline's not even, you know, happening, then perhaps that's the missing piece. And I know, I was looking at the C-TAC report, too, which I think is relevant and builds on this. Similar recommendations, concerns, suggestions, right? So then it's like, okay, can we perhaps imagine, where in the same way every year kids do a course selection process, that we actually have a community surveying process in that school, a localized process, to find out what are they interested in and communicate to the community, like, what's available? That way, the sunsetting thing is an option, and we're more intentional about those electives that are actually of interest to that community? Because we can't just rely on, say, second language spoken at home to understand what language interest there is, right? And electives, I mean, how are we even surveying that? But that's, I know that's my time, but I'll take a go-back. I don't know if, yeah, Dr. Presidio?
Well, again, I mean, a lot of great comments to dig into. I mean, I think your comment about surveying and getting more interest from the community about, you know, what courses students and families want access to in those particular schools is important. We have a process when we add world languages to do that, right? Like, that's how we've come up with, you know, some of the heritage language expansion that we've done, is because it was really important to students in that community to have that language offered. We need to come up with similar, I think, strategies about how we do that for other courses. The academic and career plan is one of the pieces that I think could be leveraged to do a better job of that, because, again, that process is, you know, it's more than just filling out a piece of paper and saying, these are the courses that I'm going to take. It's doing interest inventories, figuring out, you know, what are you really interested in as a student? What are your perceived strengths, right? How does that align to, you know, different, you know, potential future occupations that you might be interested in pursuing? What types of courses would you take to be able to do that, right? There's a whole set of wealth of resources there available to students and parents to help them really understand what's being offered and what those experiences are that we're not utilizing consistently. And again, I don't mean, the fidelity of implementation issues are a challenge. I don't want it to sound like, oh, it's just easy, let's go do this with fidelity, because somebody in the school has to take the time to do that with students beyond the school counselor, right? One opportunity that we think that we have now that we haven't had in the past is to utilize the advisory period to do some of this work. We're only in the second year of having advisory, right? That wasn't a structure that we had in the past. We're still building out the program and curriculum components to advisory. We could certainly do a lot more with some of this academic and career planning there.
I actually have a few seconds. So what if it was like an annual survey, right? Where we provided the school with the full list of options, right? And then families were able to pick, oh, these are the things that I'm interested in. And by the end, maybe there's an elective that was never even offered that people are interested in, or even a language, right? Because that's, I still think our way of doing that is problematic.
There's opportunities to improve that process, for sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
I would direct people to look at the clock if they're curious about how much time somebody has left. Yes, Ms. Darren Kofax.
Thank you for this report. I appreciate it. It's quite comprehensive, and I also appreciate the listing of the pathway course offerings by school. That's not something I've seen recently, so thank you for that. That's important for us as we help make decisions. I think you used the statement, you know, what makes us go from good to great? And I think as we look at this, we have to realize we offer a tremendous amount of opportunity for our students. So I think as we talk about this, we're looking at something that is quite comprehensive for so many people, but we do want to get better. I do appreciate the way the recommendations are outlined, as some of my colleagues said. And as Dr. Presidio stated and Ms. Tolan noted, some of these recommendations that are outlined have been in our original strategic plan, we have tried to do in the past. And I think it's impossible to try to understand what our financial situation was, our underfunding situation for 15 years prior to the last four years. So I think it's really important that we get that and we understand it. So with that, I do say I appreciate the offerings to promote the, where our community is going, where the world's going, offering more STEAM and STEM-related things, as well as promoting teaching as a great career path. I think that's important, and that's your number-one thing. I have a question on expanding the online campus to course offerings without charging, but it's only part of the, if your habit is part of a seven-period thing. I think as some students, particularly IB schools, it's really hard to get everything you need in there, and I would love the opportunity to think about offering those two free courses, even as part of summer programs. Because, you know, students have to go outside sometimes to do the financial course, the financial literacy. IB students have to do, I forget the name of it, but it's theory of knowledge, theory of knowledge, that one, they often have to do that outside. So I would like us to consider that, because that is a real equity issue. As I noted, this is the way our world's going, and they are heavily STEAM-focused, and I appreciate that. However, it is a little bit, and no one who's known me for a while, it is a little bit light on the arts recommendations and how to expand those, at least in the recommendations. So I would like us, as a board and as we move forward, to consider that, because expansion of these programs is crucial, because some of the arts programings that we offer, you cannot get in other places but one place, and you cannot get there by, you cannot get there from other places. We don't offer transportation, and you cannot even drive there. You'd have to, and I know that from personal experience. So I do think we should be, my time is up, and I had a moment to breathe, so I will say, I do think we should be able to, but that was what I just said, to expand offerings so everyone can get to them, because that is one of the most important things. Because if you can't get to it, it's a true equity issue.
Thank you. Any response?
I mean, just briefly, thanks for those comments and suggestions, and we certainly didn't mean to short-change the arts. I mean, as an arts major myself, I would never do that. Looking at the areas of greatest, I think inequities was really the issue, but you point out, there are still inequities within the arts, right? So that's where we were suggesting some things like a specialty-focused program, school in fine and performing arts could be an opportunity for us, or allowing students to take classes at neighboring schools without having that, you know, be something that they'd have to leave their school and attend an academy to do if there was a neighboring school that offered that course, allowing them to be able to do that for just that one, you know, singleton or doubleton course.
You understand what I'm saying. Thank you, Dr. Presidio.
Before Dr. Anderson and I take our turns, we're coming up at 1:00. I think we're going to try and fit us in for our first rounds, and then we're going to take our lunch break. Everybody has wanted to go back thus far, just about everybody. And so I'd like to get a sense of the board, if folks are willing to push things a little bit in terms of our time today. Ms. Zeismarheiser?
We were late starting. But if we extended to 4:00 PM, who would be available to stay until 4:00 PM? All right, well, then we're not going to be able to do the go-bags in order to stay on schedule. We will take our turns, we'll have our lunch, we'll go on to the strategic plan. If you have comments or questions for Dr. Presidio or our consultants, you can communicate with them over email. Ms. Kies-Gamara?
Are we doing next-ups?
Yes, you'll get an email with the document.
The chart was already sent earlier.
Yeah. Dr. Anderson?
All right, I'm going to jump into my questions. On page 15, the recommendation to increase awareness and visibility, I felt like this one missed the mark a little bit. I want to piggyback on what Ms. Darren Kofax has shared. For many of the kids in our community, it's a matter of transportation. It's not a lack of awareness. So I guess I'm a little confused why this did not come up as a recommendation, given the finding for transportation to be a point for consideration.
Well, I'll only speak to the FCBSS side and say, we did recognize transportation as a barrier.
I think I was asking the survey.
Fair enough.
Four-point, thank you.
Just, I think, to clarify, the recommendations with respect to leveraging technology to create greater access was, you know, the result of that finding. We had discussed potential transportation supports, but again, given the geographical size of the county, some of the options that might be suggested did not appear to be feasible. And so I think both in terms of the division's long-term recommendation around adding programming down the line, as well as in the short term, leveraging online resources was tied into what we had recommended.
And just to add to that...
I'm not sure if that answered my question. I was referring to the recommendation on page 15 of the PowerPoint.
Do you have it, or do you need to?
Sorry, I didn't have the right page up. Can you repeat your question, please?
Dr. Anderson, we'll pause your clock for a second.
Thank you. I guess I was looking for a recommendation that was a little bit more in alignment with the finding that transportation was an issue, and also, anecdotally, I know that this is an issue for our communities, because when a program is across the county and you don't drive, how does one even access it, even with awareness of its existence?
I appreciate the question. Thanks for reiterating. So to your comments in the report, again, we took a look at some of the data that we were able to gather with regard to waitlisting, and we did see that that did have an impact, where students would have to travel farther, that they were more likely to kind of rescind an opportunity to attend. And so, again, in terms of some of the recommendations that you see around the online offerings that is tied in there, I think in terms of page 15, that summary doesn't capture it very well. But I do think that a lot of the comments that we gathered through the surveys and focus groups did convey a lack of awareness also has been contributing to students not accessing some of the programming.
Is the transportation data that you found anywhere in this report?
Yes, there's a waitlisting data tied to transportation in the report. Excuse me, it's on page, well, page 15 of the report.
Thank you.
Yes.
Now I want to move to the recommendation that's on page 16 of the PowerPoint, where you talked about expanding the role of C-TAC. I would love to get a sense of what does that mean?
Thanks, yes. So I think it was Representative Marin had commented about the Nashville suggestion or reference, and so there are a couple other communities, I think Denver as well, that was mentioned as another exemplar. I think in terms of what partnership could entail, the many C-TAC members that we spoke to all expressed an interest in being more involved. And so there is a consistent structure to engage them on important points, but I think they wanted to understand how they could do more. I think this was an area where, again, in terms of staffing at the division level, the staffing that, the staff that is available to support engagement around this work is doing the best that they can to stay in touch with prospective partners, but I do think that it's an area where other communities have sometimes even created additional organizations to facilitate that level of partnership, to engage all the many industry partners in the region. And so that's a piece that is worth, I think, engaging with community partners, and that's something that, you know, the division wouldn't, you know, wouldn't take on in completely itself, but in partnership with a community organization.
Okay, maybe I'm just reading this incorrectly, Dr. Presidio, and please tell me if I'm outside of the scope of the study. I was thinking that Four Points, given what they've known over the past two years of the division and what they know nationally, would offer some of those very specific recommendations in terms of how we can leverage our group, our advisory committee here. And that's the piece that I'm not seeing.
Well, I mean, I think just to elaborate a little bit, there's been a very collaborative relationship between staff and Four Points in terms of the development, the collection of the data, the analysis of the data, the development of recommendations. We've really relied on their external expertise and their national scope of best practices. But thinking about the recommendations around C-TAC, what I would add to what Dr. Ruiz said is, I would think about that C-TAC functioning almost in a similar fashion to the FATE Board that we have, the Foundation for Applied Technical Education, where we have industry experts that come in to advise us on our program, right? Like, right now, we have a lot of community participation and some industry expertise on C-TAC, but we could actually target and bring in, you know, local, regional leaders in these different pathway fields to come in and really advise us and support us in the program. And that's just increasing the level of collaboration and expertise with industry partners. So I think that's what we were kind of talking about with that specific recommendation. That's how I interpreted the work, working with Rudy and his team.
My time is certainly expiring, but I'll circle back with you on that. The recommendations that you provided, I do appreciate how you have structured them in terms of short-term, midterm, and long-term. What I think also, what I would looking, what I would be looking for is a prioritization. Just because it's short-term doesn't necessarily make it the best thing to do. It's just necessarily low as hanging fruit. So I would love to get a sense of the prioritization, of which one of these things is the most bang for our buck, because, you know, I did some quick math for the things that you did have dollars assigned to, we're talking 18 million, and those are just for the things that you've had dollars assigned to. Where should we start? So I would love some thought about that. What's more important than the other? It's not necessarily time-bound.
No, thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I was kind of thinking about today's work session to put the recommendations out and to hear from board members in terms of your thoughts and feedback around some of the priority areas, which we've heard, I think, some of that, just around some basic things like communication and marketing, right, that really don't involve costs. The things that would have costs associated with them, I think we would want to do that work together. What I did do to kind of step over that initial line, working with our team, is to make those recommendations in consistency of access of some core courses at base schools, to make sure that students didn't have those transportation challenges and some of those other issues, and tried to prioritize the pathways that we think that we should really be focused on first, again, around information technology, health sciences, and education/teachers for tomorrow. But we definitely can refine that a lot and would be happy to do that if that's a board request, or we could do that in partnership with the board as part of the strategic planning process. There's lots of different ways that we could do that work as a next step.
Well, I definitely think there's space for you all to do that. As the people who are really deeply involved in the daily operations and are subject matter experts, we need to have something to respond to. experts, we need to have something to respond to from you. The other thing I want to make sure I spend some time saying is, I'm kind of concerned with a couple of things that I'm hearing here, not because they're not great ideas, but because I want to make sure we are comprehensively taking a look at what that means. Providing access and having transportation not be an issue. Well, we all know the transportation, great idea, but we know that transportation has been an area of need. Are we going to exacerbate that? Because we don't even have enough drivers right now. Is that realistic? So I want that to be the thought. Additionally, you mentioned adding 153 STEM teachers. Do we need that? Why do we have the number of STEM teachers that we have in the schools that we have? How are they being funded right now? What is our goal with that? Adding 150 teachers just for parity does not necessarily mean that it's equity. Do all of these kids, these schools need it? I feel like we're putting braces on everyone here.
Well, I mean, again, that could be something that the board would decide, that we either need it or we don't. I mean, looking at where we thought that...
It's not that we need it or we don't, but what do we get when we put it there?
Well, you get a targeted experience with an educator who has the skills in that area to really provide, you know, intentional instruction to students in those areas.
And quantifying that, connecting those dots.
Right. So if you think about it, similar to what we do in our arts and music programs, right, we send those students to a specialist. Similarly, with librarians, right, we send them to a specialist who has expertise in that area, basically to provide a consistent experience to all students, and something that we have said as a community is a foundational experience that we all want all students to have. If we wanted that for STEM, there are different ways to do it, right? You can obviously integrate things into the curriculum, which we've done, and we have staff here in the room who've worked really hard at integrating some computer science into math and science instruction. But that level of intentionality in direct instruction is not the same as you get if you're going for 60 minutes a week to work with a STEAM teacher in a real focused area. So it's all trade-offs that we have to do as we think about all the things that we want to offer to students in terms of the experiences and the things that we can provide funding to be able to offer to students.
My time has expired. I have so much.
Put in an email. All right, I'll take my...
Well, you know where to find me, and I'm happy to meet with you.
I will find you. I think we're going to have to have a one-on-one.
Absolutely. I'd look forward to it.
I'll begin my time. Thank you very much. Can you talk a little bit about what role updating ed specs might have in future availability of programs?
So that's part of what we were referring to as the longer-term recommendations, is to do that work and make that part of the capital improvement plan. So if we were doing a renovation, and if we had identified that certain pathway programs were a priority for expansion, we would build into the ed specs that perhaps we need a health sciences lab, or, you know, cybersecurity lab, or whatever it was, based on those priorities that the school division had set for program expansion. That would need to drive the updating of the ed specs, and then we would need to finance, or, you know, basically plan for financing that as part of the capital improvement plan. And we can do that through renovation cycle, and we could do that through new construction.
Thank you. I want to turn to the report from Four Point. I'll be honest, that I felt it was a little lacking in terms of comparisons to other jurisdictions, and I'm curious, you know, it says, "Overall offerings and outcomes for career pathways," this is page three, "generally exceed those in other large national school districts." And then when I look at the further in the report, there are six school divisions cited with no details, really, about what they're offering. So how did you come to this conclusion?
Thanks for the question. There are some context laid as far as that goes. I mentioned in my opening remarks the fact that the use of the term "career pathways" is fairly new here in Fairfax, and when you look at the reporting and what's included in the different offerings tables, some of that has come out in today's discussion, the fact that there are different ways to categorize the programs and the offerings. So while that's true here in Fairfax, that's also true across the state and across the country. And so, there is not consistent reporting district by district, unfortunately, to be able to make easy comparisons or benchmarking. So we went out and did that work to benchmark against half a dozen of the largest districts in the country, as well as another half dozen districts with similar demographics. And again, in terms of looking at how many, what proportion of your students were enrolled in career pathways, not only CTE, but including CTE, and then of those students who are enrolled in those programs, how many were not only completing the program, but also earning credentials. All of those numbers far exceeded your peer districts and divisions. And so, that's what informed those summaries. And again, there are examples in there of the districts that I'm referring to and how they compare. But again, while, you know, particular program models can get a lot of attention, whether it be PTEC or others, what we're finding typically is that it's small groups of students, even in very large districts, that are both participating, and then much smaller proportions that are actually completing and earning credentials from those programs. So again, you know, you're in a great place comparatively. I don't think anyone in this room is, you know, content with staying at the current level. And so, we try to provide as much context as possible to help you continue improving.
What effort went into gathering the information from other school divisions?
We did a lot of individual outreach directly to those districts. We have contacts in a number of those districts, and we're able to gather information from them directly, as well as through various data reporting systems, both at the district and state level, from those different areas. And again, we also reached out to different national organizations related to CTE, like ACTE and Advanced CTE and others, just to, you know, make sure. We reached out to Council for Great City Schools to find out and make sure that, you know, whether there was or not benchmark reporting data. Unfortunately, given the fact that a lot of this work is funded by federal Carl Perkins Grant funding, a lot of the reporting just basically is tied to that, which is essentially state-level reporting. So state-by-state comparisons weren't very informative for this particular review, of course, and so that's why we did the extra work of reaching out directly to the districts that you all had in mind to compare to.
And those districts you reached out to directly didn't share any information about offerings?
They did share some information about offerings, and some of which is included in the report.
Okay. If there are reports that school divisions have commissioned like this one, I think we'd all be open to seeing those if you collected that information as part of your research, because the comparisons are just lacking, as far as I'm concerned. I appreciate it, though. On the subject of exemplar, you know, programs, how were those identified?
In this case, this is an area where, in discussions with the division, again, we wanted to make sure that we weren't limiting ourselves to comparing you all to just, you know, the top 10 or top 20 largest districts. We felt that, again, some of the, what would be informative for you all would be what's really standing out the last few years in this field. And so, we identified best and promising practices more broadly in this work.
Can you talk a little bit more about what's really standing out?
In which particular...
What kind of analysis leads one to say what's really standing out in this field?
Sure. Yeah, I think the report bears out why each exemplar was highlighted. So we talked a little bit about Denver and Nashville this morning. And so in terms of, again, engagement with industry partners, Nashville does stand out, both in terms of the number of industry partners that are engaged, as well as the reach with students and the consistency across schools in that regard. And then with respect to Denver, again, you'll notice from the report that the success of the communication efforts, as far as the momentum that was gathered with student enrollment in those programs, was evidence to support their inclusion as an exemplar.
Drilling down on these two questions in particular, because they're the first two questions of the report, right? How do we compare, and what are the exemplar examples of best practices? And in the report, it says "other evidence-based programs." Very different thing between evidence-based practices and evidence-based programs. Can you talk to us about evidence-based practices? Because if we are going to spend the money that Dr. Presidio is talking about, we've got to know that we're spending it on things that are going to move the needle. And, you know, a program like PTEC is a good example of something that uses evidence-based practices, perhaps, but I don't see anyone, anywhere in here, and I could be missing it, that talks about what those evidence-based practices are.
No, it's a great question. So just, you know, reviewing in my mind the 84 pages of the report and thinking about what's most pertinent there, I think what comes to mind is the work that's being done with respect to the work-based learning continuum. And so, again, that's an area where, you know, again, certain folks will think specifically about certain types of work-based learning, like apprenticeships or internships, but that is an area where early exposure is possible, to be able to do career-connected learning as early as middle grades. And so, again, in terms of the direction that FCPS has been taking the past few years, expanding awareness of work-based learning as a practice and infusing it not only in CTE programs, but more broadly, we think is good progress, but also is among those practices that you're asking about.
Thank you. My minute left, I want to talk a little bit about how we're raising awareness. We start at a very early age with kids, telling them, you know, to go to four-year, you know, this is your path for four years, especially at a time when they're excited about all kinds of different occupations that may not include a four-year path. How are we imparting to parents at the earliest ages about the programs that we have in our system, and showing them that there is an economic stability component to those programs later in life when they move on and take those careers? I think of things like taking field trips to our auto-tech programs with our elementary kids, so they can see the kids, you know, like their older brothers and sisters doing the work.
Well, I mean, again, not to be redundant, but that's an area of improvement that we need to focus on. We recognize that. The academic and career plan, as I've mentioned, I think can contribute to that, but it's an area that we just need to do more work in. I'll leave it at that.
Because one part in this report that's very clear is that we're doing a great job, and we are, and we have a lot to brag about. So it'd be great if we put that dog and pony show on display at every PTA, you know, over the course of years, at PTAs across the county, and do everything we can to engage as early as... I feel like middle school's too late, frankly.
It is too late, yeah.
So, all right.
Thank you.
With that, I appreciate everybody taking their time today, and we will take a break for lunch for 25 minutes.
We're going to go ahead and get started. We have quorum, so thank you all for your patience. We've had a little bit of a late start this morning, so I appreciate the patience. We're going to go until 3:30, or until we no longer have quorum, whichever comes first. So this is a strategic planning work update. There's no decision point for the board today. Rather, we'll hear an update regarding the work of the planning teams and where we are in the strategic planning process. Dr. Reed has previously sent to the board the data that was used by our strategic planning teams, so the board can have that data and be aware of it. The presentation used during this planning teams, and additional presentation for the work session was posted on board docs. Again, to reiterate, there's no decision point for this work session, but just a brief update for the board on the work of the planning teams. So I will turn it over to Dr. Reed to go ahead and begin the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it's our pleasure this afternoon to have both Mutu Fabai and Kenneth Jones with us, as well as Dustin and Marcy, and all of the champions around the room who happened to champion, yes, champions in general, and also who happened to be championing one of the teams. We have a wide variety of teams with a wide variety of stakeholder and constituent voice. So the goal is to have everybody here this afternoon to share a little of the work that's happening in their particular planning team, and also to hear from Mutu and Kenneth a little about next steps, and be happy to entertain any board conversation. Again, while it seems like an hour and a half is a lot of time, it will fly, so we certainly welcome the opportunity for a robust conversation. So I'm going to turn it over to Marcy Neal at this point, and have both Marcy and Dustin kind of head us off here.
Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome Mutu and his colleague Lauren Klacke is with us as well today, and we're going to start off with some updates from his team to walk us through some of the work that's already been done and looking ahead on the horizon, and then have plenty of time left over for board discussion. So, Mutu, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Marcy. Good afternoon, and I want to thank the board for their chance to give an update. I also want to start off by really commending a lot of people, scores of folks who made this possible, Marcy, Dustin, Alicia, all the champions. And we've worked in lots of places. I don't think we've made a more dedicated and more professional team. And you have a really impressive group of folks, you know, working within the division. Now, can you hear me so far? Marcy, you okay?
Yep, we're good, Mutu.
Okay, all right. So I'd like to do an update that will, I will use the PowerPoint to set the stage. And part of what we're going to do also is to give you, like, a tactile feel for some of the things that the planning teams did. But then go to the next slide, please. So, four parts to the presentation. The, just a reminder about the planning process itself, the framework we use, it's the same framework we use for all the teams. The process of engaging diverse voices. You may recall, when we met in September, Dr. Reed said, you know, cast a wide net, but have a tight process. And that's what we've been attempting to do. Hundreds of people have participated so far. Then more specifically, for the board's interest, is the community forum calendar, which we've seen before, but we'd like to bring it back up one more time. And then finally, the milestones we have in mind for January and February of next year. Next slide, please. Next one. So, my plan, the primary purpose of planning is alignment, and that's what's actually happening right now. We have diverse voices, you know, working really diligently to get on the same page, so that we can have improved outcomes for students. Next slide, please. And this slide, and the one that comes after it, are the two, think of them as graphic organizers for the work. The planning process has four questions. What data do we have? So everything begins with looking at what's the outcomes we've produced for students. What does the data say? We call that analysis. Why does the data look that way? We call that discovery. So both of those first two blocks, data and then analysis and discovery, are looking back. They're really assessments of current state. And once we get through those first two blocks, then we get to the solution. And we actually, last week, one, two of the teams actually dipped their toes into the solution phase, and I'll say more about that in a few moments. Next slide, please. So the solution apart will consist of three components. Think of this as the ultimate recommendations in the plan. The first set of recommendations will deal with what we want for our students, the portrait of a graduate, which we already have, promise, goals, and measures, excellence targets, and so on. So circle number one would be about outcomes for students. Circle number two will be about what needs to happen around instruction, so that we can get all students home. Instruction remains the strongest predictor or driver of outcomes for students. So we elevate circle number two, place a slightly higher level than all the adult things we have to do, because, again, it's when it's at the intersection of student, teacher, and content that the real magic happens. That's the reason for elevating instructional effectiveness a little bit higher than everything else. And then circle number three, it's about the infrastructure that needs to be in place so that we can have effective instructions, you know, to get all kids home. Next slide, please. All right, next slide. Okay, so what have we done so far? We had five convenings, and we've also finished student voice work, student voice... We had five convenings, and we've also finished a student voice work, student voice team part of it. There was a focus group led by the principal at each one of the schools in the division, and an online survey of all students in grade three through 12, close to 100,000 students completed our survey, and my team is in the process of analyzing the data. We also have the focus group information from the 200 odd schools, which we'll be analyzing over the next few, next couple of weeks. Then five of the planning teams, may I go back one slide, please? Now, back. Thank you. One more. Thanks. We had five convenings, but the last we can have, the first one was with a core planning team. About 145 people showed up for a two-day session. The sessions were from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, diverse stakeholders, including students. Then we also had a two-day session with just the, what you might call the teaching and learning instructional folks, and teachers made up, school-level teachers made up about half of the 125 participants and the instructional focus. Only about a quarter of the participants came from the division level. So it's mostly school-level people, 75% in total came from, well, people who worked at the school level. We had a three-hour family team present session on a Saturday. About 42 participants came for the session. The alignment team, the team I describe as the movers and shakers, you kind of tongue-in-cheek, met last Monday, and about 40 people showed up for that. And in the final session we've had so far is with the faith community or the houses of worship participants, about 42 people came to the two-hour December 6 session, and they, that's in mid again on March 1st. Next slide. So what I'd like to do now is to give you maybe just like an insight into some of the work that was done by those teams. So Marcy, if you could switch to the data document, please? The one document? The second document? Yeah, thank you. Page one. Scroll down a little bit. So. Now, back to page one, please. One more. Okay. Can you just slide the page up? Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So I want to give you a feel for some of the tools that the various planning teams used. The framework for the process is the one I showed before with the four questions. What data do we have? What does the data say? Why does the data look that way? What are we going to do about it? In green are the dates for each one of those sessions, and as you look across each row, you will see what's been covered. For example, the teacher team that met on December 2nd and December 5th, that's instructional focus team for two days, they analyzed the strengths and concerns based on the data. They worked on the root causes of the current state of student learning and achievement. They did an exercise that we call Wonderful Experiences, Bright Futures by Design, and it's a generative process where we just give a very simple prompt, asking the participants to paint a picture of what we want for all of our students, such that they have wonderful experiences that will prepare them for bright future. And I'll show you some of the ideas that came out of that work. The teacher team also, instructional focus team also worked on the goals. We didn't get as far as the measures. So that's the team that's farthest along so far. The core planning team did finish the looking back piece, and also did the Wonderful Experiences, Bright Future exercise. The other three teams, family team, alignment team, and faith team, they have much less time to work. So although they're going through the same process, it's a little bit abbreviated or abridged. So they got through the current state, the data piece. They sort of did a little bit, very little bit, on the wonderful experiences. We'll pick it up with them next time, and we'll also do the goals with them when we see them on March 1st, a few weeks from now. So I'm going to keep, we'll keep updating this graphic on the screen, and what I want to emphasize is that every team gets a chance to weigh in on every part of the process. They do sorts of different, the risk of detail because of the amount of time they have, but there's no part of the process that every other team doesn't get a chance to comment on or give feedback to. Sometimes they generate primary ideas, other times they're reacting to what will have been completed by the two large teams, the core planning team and instructional focus team. So let's go to the next page and look at some of the prompts they had and the work they produced. A primary tool we use for capturing the work is something we call a note catcher, because it's a conversation that takes place on those, at those table teams, and also across everyone in the room that matters, and we want to memorialize that. So the note catcher represents the official record of the work of the team at the table level and then at the team level. And we probably have, we had about close to 20 teams, 20 table teams for the core planning team, about 14 or 15 table teams for the instructional focus team. The family team had three groupings and so on. So let's look at the next page to see how the note catcher works. The very first, keep going. The very first thing that each team did, the first two teams did was to set some meeting norms. So let's say this is table seven. So table seven had a chance, as a table, to propose the norms and behaviors that should guide the deliberations. Below that is another table, let's say that's table nine. Scroll down a little bit, please. So that's the, those are the ideas from the other table, and then as a whole room, all 145 people will reach consensus on the norms that will guide us. And what I just described is really the way the process goes. Every participant gets a chance to organize their own individual ideas or thoughts. Then as a table, they will discuss them and reach consensus when possible, and as a whole room will reach consensus, and that's repeated at every stage. Next step will be the analysis of data. They're giving the directions, and if you scroll down, you can see what this table, if you scroll down to the next page, please. So this is information generated by one of the teams at their table. The strengths, the data, the concerns about the data, and the supporting evidence based on the data. So we'll try at this point to insist very gently that we're not as interested in opinion yet, you know, just the facts, and it's a data booklet that really guided the ideas from each one of those tables. So once they've analyzed the data, if you can go maybe a couple pages down to the shift So that's just, those are my examples of what they did. Keep going. Then the next related is this section we call the shift happens, and this is the root cause part of it. So part one is to just answer the question, what does the data say? At this stage, the one on the screen, is an attempt to answer the question, why does the data look that way? And it's at this point that each person can bring into the discussion their own ideas about what the root causes or the underlying causes are for the data they just looked at. So what data do we have? What does the data say? This one attempts to answer, why does the data look that way? Next page. And now we'll switch to solutions. And the first exercise on this solution is the one that goes with the prompt that I mentioned early on, and it's a very simple prompt, you know, paint a picture as a table group of the wonderful experiences we would like to make happen for all of our students in the division, in order for them to have bright futures. And the participants were allowed to just create this any way they want. We've shown you some of the chart paper representations from a few tables, and in addition to the chart paper representation, we also videotaped their presentation, and some of them were quite, you know, hilarious, actually. All of them very inspiring. So this table built this around graduation day and the things we need to have in place so that all students can graduate. Next one. This is one of my favorite, because, now, back a little bit, please. Yes. This was actually produced by one of the students on the team. She says she wants to be an artist when she grows up, and the way they told the story is to have her looking at herself in the mirror, and what does she see, you know, SCL, attendance and discipline support, academic support and so on. So this is through a student's eyes, and that particular student also created the graphical representation. We can take a few more and look at a few more samples. Next page. So this is another representation, almost in the form of a, you know, series of radial diagrams. This is another one from one of the teams, experiences and opportunities for all, and they identify some of the features that they would like to see. Next one, please. Also, on the solution piece, we asked the teams that if we could make one promise to our students, what would the promise be? You can think of the promise as almost one way for us to derive in a backwards way mission based on our core values. This approach, since we've been using it the last few years, has come out to be very, much more powerful than the classical mission vision core values. The notion of the adults in no more than 25 words stating a promise to our students. And all 145 people in the room were given three or four sticky dots to go around the room and place their dots next to the ones that really appeals to them. This was one of the highest dot collectors, so to speak. Next example, next one, please. A little bit more. Can you scroll? Okay. As I can scroll to the next page, just my examples. Oh, that's the last one. Great. Thank you. So Marcy, we can go back to the PowerPoint now where we left off, please? Thank you. If you go back one slide? Thanks. So we've just described what happened with the five teams that had convenings, the core planning team, the family team, the instructional focus team, the alignment team, and the faith community. We have a calendar for the others that we haven't met with so far. We have a session with the board today. We do have, we joined the open tenants leadership team meeting every Monday, just to do an update, and we just about nailed down the dates for principal admin team meetings. And on the next page, I want to share just a few new, I'll call them news and notes. Next slide, please. Few things to keep in mind. A lot of interest in the data, and as someone, you know, who really believes that data is good feedback for all of us, I'm very encouraged by the level of interest we've had. The only thing that we have to do is how to manage, how to avoid analysis paralysis. The, a lot of data has been requested by the participants. Some of those make a lot of sense as part of the process, and we'll be working to make them available next time around, working with the division folks. There's some of the data that are interesting, but not necessarily germane to where the strategic planning is going. And one thing we want to help people understand is that we'll provide those additional ones. We, meaning my team and the division team, will provide those data as they're available, and we'll probably put them on the website. So we have this really interesting part going on between how much data is enough, and I want to make sure we don't discourage people from looking at data or asking for more data, but we kind of have to figure out which ones will really keep us on track with our project. And that's where the second bullet comes in, staying focused and managing expectations. Dr. Reed has made it clear that she would like the final report to get to the board by May 9th, and that's not a long time away with the, you know, with the holidays coming up. We still have a long way to go, and if we stay really focused, we believe that we can pull it off. We may have to ask perhaps the core planning team for one more day. We wouldn't, I'm not making a request for that yet, but by early February, we will know whether we might need one more day with the core planning team. But otherwise, everything is going very well. The request for staff and community surveys, it's on the way, it's being addressed right now, and by the time, by the next time we see the board, we should have more definitive guidelines about how we're going to put this up. Now, next slide, please. Next one. So we do have a calendar, which I believe board members have seen, between Monday, January 30th, and Thursday, February 16th, roughly two weeks. We've scheduled 12 community forums. Nine of those will be at the magisterial district level, and three of them will be at large. And just two more slides. Next one, please. Last one. And this is some of the milestones, you know, coming up. Then all the monthly milestones will be pretty much the same, wrapping up what happened the previous month and getting ready for the, for the next month. So for, for us, for my team, January is about consolidating all the information that's been gathered, responses from 100,000 students from this survey, focus group information from 200 schools. We have the note catcher information from five convenings and about, you know, 40 tables. And then we also have to get ready for the community forum, the first of which will be on January 30th. Then the February milestones will be about, you know, looking back on what happened in January and then also planning for March. And that's really all I have by way of any formal presentation. I'd be more than happy to take your comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reed. Is there anything else you want to add before I turn to board member questions? Okay. Board members, if you have questions or comments, please put your placards up. I'll start with Ms. McLaughlin.
Great, thank you. I do want to share with you colleagues that I did raise with Dr. Reed, that I heard from some concerned staff and community members about what I think is not quite the accurate wording that helps people understand what we're striving towards. It has to do with the quote of equal outcomes for every student without exception. As we know, we are a school division that wants each and every child to have their needs met by name and by need, and to reach their fullest potential. But we have students who are on the gifted spectrum. We've got students with, students with disability needs, and so when we say equal outcomes, oftentimes what that connotes to the community is the outcome is how we're measuring by tests and all these other things. But, so I, you know, Dr. Reed, I wanted to know if you could comment a little bit about that, because I know we want each and every child to meet their fullest potential and not this idea that we're compressing people from one end of the learning spectrum to the other, and we certainly don't want outcomes based on students', you know, zip code and circumstance either.
Right. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, and I think that language has created a swirl of its own, right? And the intent, of course, is to make sure that equal outcomes imply that each student equally reaches their potential. And I think we can frame that better, phrase that better, because otherwise it creates a perception, I think, of what we're not about. I know, Mutu, that's a line that you have used, and I also shared with Ms. McLaughlin a bit sort of your rationale for that line, but I also think it's important to explain to our community how we're viewing that in terms of our premise in our planning. So Mutu, do you want to share what your thoughts are on that? And then I'll just make sure we And then I'll just make sure we put a fine point to, um, what we mean by that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, the, my, uh, take on that, Dr. Reed, is pretty much the same as you described. And the, I, I, I come at this war, uh, many of my ideas and views are really influenced by being a parent. And, uh, when I talk about equal outcomes, not in, in the sense of all students getting the same grade or being expected to take the same courses. But when they leave us, that we prepare them for a world where each one of them will be, uh, able to live their fullest potential and be contributors. So that's the sense in which we use the phrase, uh, equal outcomes. But I can see also why it could be, uh, misinterpreted differently than what's intended. And we can fix that.
I also think, and one of the things Mutsu and I talked about is what we want to be really clear about is having equally high expectations for each and every one of our students. Because I think at some points in some time, what we've seen perhaps is the outcome of differential expectations. Um, where I might look at a student in a particular neighborhood or a particular zip code and say, well, do you know, we have this expectation. And what we want to be resolute about is saying that we have equally high expectations for all of our students. And absolutely, uh, want to, that what's going to be differential at times is that high level of support. So I think, Mutsu, we can adjust language about that. But what we want is an equal outcome is each and every student achieving their full, unique potential. Thank you for raising that.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say how each student, uh, experiences or demonstrates that, of course, will vary.
Uh, thank you. Um, because as I said, I think that we all embrace the desire that we have the highest expectations and the highest outcomes that come from that for every student regardless of background and circumstance. Um, the second thing is, um, Mutsu, you had mentioned that the root cause data analysis. Who's going to be doing this data analysis? And how will that really, I positively impact this work? Because I, I, I want to make sure we're not engaging in just individual perspective taking and, you know, brainstorming in a vacuum. Um, so if you could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we actually starting with the, uh, division participants. So they have a chance to tell us what they believe the root cause, what the root causes are. And, uh, the summary root causes will come from, you know, those note catcher comments that they've shared with us. And if we have some, uh, perspective based on experience that we want to bring to the table, we'll, we'll recommend those also, but make sure it's also backed by data. So the folks doing the root cause analysis are the people who've been participating in the, in the planning up to this point.
Okay, I may go offline and get more detail from you and Dr. Reed on that because I feel very strongly that, um, our, our community knows and appreciates that we are a premier school system with people who are, uh, experts in K-12, um, education. And that includes the fact that there's national research out there with findings about how, um, K-12 systems have been able to close opportunity gaps and move the needle. And, um, you know, in my 30 seconds left, Dr. Reed, I would say my macro level feedback here is I would like for our consultants and your team to really focus in on what is the national research showing us on school divisions who've done strategic planning work, where they've had success in moving the needle? And that we bring that out to our community. The brainstorming when people, I mean, their input is always valuable. But what I really want is for us to present to them research-based information and then have us tell us what we might be missing or for them to also feel that connection to this work. And if there's time for a go back, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that's exactly our intent. Um, one of the documents Mutsu will be sharing in the process is an Academy of Sciences Equity Indicator Report that talks about, I believe, 16 indicators that are nationally normed to best practice in terms of we cannot leave these indicators behind if we're going to close achievement gaps and have a justice-centered education system. Um, so we're going to also, though, what's very important is to build a local context. Like what might be unique about Fairfax County that we need to not disregard in terms of the experience here as we then layer on the National Academy of Sciences report, um, which we'll also share with the board and each of the stakeholder groups. So I think the melding of that will be critical.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan.
Yes, um, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the approach for the community forums. Um, you mentioned, you know, the previous teams, um, that have met the core team and then the instructional team, um, have a set of insights and, um, some analysis of the data. Will you, and you're going to be looking at that over the next couple of our several weeks before the community forums. So will you bring that analysis to the community forum and move forward with that? Or how would those forums work?
Yeah, they, uh, yes, we will be doing what you say. Well, we always start with the, uh, we don't start with the work that's been done by previous groups. We'll give the community forum participants a chance to sort of like do a quick processing of the data. They won't have 32 pages or 76 pages to work with. But we'll like them to kind of do their own independent thinking. And then we will share with them what previous teams have come up with. And we may also share what Ms. McLaughlin, uh, McLaughlin just suggested also, research from other places as well. So again, they'll be looking at data on their own. They'll hear from what others have done. The second part of the forum, if time permits, will be to ask them to weigh in on the solution part, specifically the goals and measures of student progress. So if we could identify four student outcome areas, four or five for the division, what would they recommend? So those will be the two main parts of the forum. You know, look, look back on it, uh, our current state, look, looking at the data. And then, uh, give us some input on what they think the desired state ought to be around just the goals for student learning and, and achievement. That's about all we'll have time for.
Right. I think that hour and a half will go really fast.
Yes, indeed.
Um, okay, I do want to appreciate the opportunity that I had to participate in the instructional team. Um, I just want to make a comment even for my colleagues that I, I think listening to the process too, you know, maybe people might have frustration level that it's not specific enough. But I think that, um, even on the team, we struggled with that a little bit because you want to jump right to the solution. Well, if this is what the data looks like, this is what we can do. And I think the discussions that we had and trying to remain general and really high level, I think will benefit us in the long run. So I think we have to appreciate this process and kind of go with it and, you know, see where it takes us. I appreciate the, the facilitation.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Uh, I, I just wanted to say as well, um, getting to participate, Ms. Omeish and I got to participate in the faith committee group. And I really wanted to compliment, it was so well-run. It definitely brought people together, I think, in a way. And even the way people were situated at a table was very clearly intentional. And I think we all noticed that it gave us an opportunity to talk among each other in a way that everyone at the table commented they'd never had that opportunity before. So even just the side note of this, I think a lot of the themes are similar. When you look at, um, like these posters, which I know were not from our group, but looking, um, you know, very similar comments and concerns as, as what I heard expressed on that day. But I also think just the opportunity that these are providing for, A, finding some commonality. You know, I think there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. Um, and, and folks don't know where to get some of these answers. And so just the work, the, the side benefit of this, of having that contact and knowing who to talk to at FCPS to find out this information, um, instead of getting it, you know, off of Twitter, for example, um, is, is huge. And the conversations among the groups, because all of a sudden it was like, oh, well, our church does this outreach program. Oh, well, so does our synagogue. Well, so does our mosque. Okay, well, how, if we see here from this data that we have chronic absenteeism in X community, then what can we be doing? Because we're already working to support that community in this way. And one of the big themes, at least in our table, was pre-K. And to have that opportunity to look at the data and say, this is so clearly important. And we don't have a place to put these kids. We agree wholeheartedly, and yet we have a serious facilities constraint. So could we start to have conversations about partnerships? What, you know, what communities are doing what? And are there opportunities for kids to have spaces, um, that are free or reduced cost? You know, maybe in these specific areas, we need to target this. Um, and I just felt like their input into the strategic plan is hugely important. But I'm not sure that the other piece isn't just or more important that for the first time, they're really connecting to each other, but connecting to us about what resources could we have right now? We had a preacher sitting next to me who said, we have 1,800 square feet of space. Like, we could be using that for pre-K. How do we work with you to figure out? We don't even know how to start a pre-K program. So I, I just wanted to say, this is all awesome. But I also think that the rest of it, um, that how this will grow, the, um, sort of tentacles into everything else, I think are going to have such a huge community benefit as well.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any of the placards up for a first round. So Mr. Derenakofax, would you like to speak before I do?
Sure. Just briefly, I am excited to be part of this process. Ms. Seizmarhizer and I were part of the core planning team. Um, I didn't get to attend as much as I would like during that time, but I look forward to attending full sessions from here on out. Um, I think it was done, uh, very well. I appreciate, uh, uh, Mutsu and Kenneth's, um, energy and, um, organization around, um, the, uh, the group. And there, it was not without challenges the morning I attended. But, um, that's what we're here for. We're here to listen to each other, talk to each other and find common ground so we can move forward. Um, because the one thing that I continue to learn and know and see every, every moment that I have been part of the FCPS team here is that we all do really want success for our kids, success in our community. And the only way we can do that is be the adults in the room, talk together, learn together, even if we have differing, um, different ways to achieve our means. So I am happy to be part of this and I look forward to more conversations in the new year.
Thank you. And I will briefly take my turn and then I know Ms. McLaughlin wanted to go back. Um, so, Ms. Omeish, would you like to go? Sorry, I got a little distracted. Why don't you go ahead and then I'll take my turn last. Okay, well, um, so I echo what Ms. Derenakofax said, and I, I really appreciate a chance to be part of the core team. What I found really interesting, um, it, it was wonderful to get everybody in the room together. And I think to Mr. Cohen's point, it really helped our community partners, I think, say, oh, now I understand why you're not doing this. Or now I understand why this is the way this is. And now I understand where the challenges are. Now I understand where the opportunities are. Um, and, and come in a positive way to say, how can we help partner, not just with our ideas and how to move forward in creating a, a common vision and goal for our students? But how can we come together now in looking at where our challenges are now? So I think starting with grounding us in the data where we are now, provided its own challenges. Because I think people in a room full of people who have, were passionate and care, wanted to dive in and say, I want all of the data so I can solve all the problems right here, right now. And I, and I loved that, that, um, the passion for trying to find solutions for things that we've been grappling with and school systems have been grappling with. So I, I think that was a really good way to ground us. And then, and the challenge of trying to move us from there to, we can't solve all these problems now. We use this as a basis to figure out where we want to go. Here's where we are now, here's where we want to go. And I just wanted to put out that the one thing that I, there was many wonderful moments. I think there's moments of challenge, um, in trying to build and bring together a community that has had a lot of divisiveness around a very positive, common purpose and path forward. And I think that worked well. But I think it worked well, um, in particular because we had the wisest students I have ever met in my life in that room. And so I really appreciate the student voice aspect that we have, um, throughout all of this. And, and that's not saying we didn't have a lot of wise community members and, and parents and families and partners, um, and staff, because we did. Um, but these students, I just have to say, our future is in really good hands. Because when, when the tensions got high, when there was frustrations, they had a way of gently bringing us all back together. Um, that was incredible. And I think Dr. Ivy's nodding because I saw it. So I, I just wanted to say, I think it's really important to continue that student voice. I'm excited to see the results of our student survey. I'm excited to see how many students participated in the survey and the work with our principals and to, um, to move this work forward. Because I think we're at a crossroads in public education. And we can take the road traveled positively or we can take the road traveled negatively. I just made that up. It's not very wise, but I'm not a student. Um, but I think this is a really great way to take the road travel positively. So I'm excited to be part of that, um, process. Um, having said that, I just wanted to ask one question. You know, when you say May 9th in terms of bringing, and I know we have community check-ins throughout the way to see for a long, the right path. Um, is there plans of how we compile the check-ins in between that involve staff and, and our consultants? But just describe a little what that process looks like of compiling all this.
So the data is being compiled by Mutsu's team. Uh, the board, as you know, we do regular strategic planning updates at all of our regularly scheduled board meetings. That will continue throughout the process so that at a high level, that will be, um, very clear as we move through the process. Um, the data will, it's an iterative process. The data will continue to be provided to the planning teams as well as we move forward. And the data eventually gets sifted and filtered and sifted and filtered, um, as we move forward closer to May 9th. Um, Mutsu, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, you, you really described it very well, Dr. Reed. The, we'll be moving forward when we get new information, very much like happens in the medical field. Uh, patient comes in, do the best analysis assessment you can, prescribe something. And then, you know, iterate, look back based on feedback and then adjust, and then look back based on feedback and adjust. That's the way it's going to be, uh, every, from now to May. So that's why there, there's no really final plan until we get to May. But we'll be giving periodic, we call it work to date. Uh, roughly every, we'll probably have about three of those scheduled. Uh, the interim reports and the caution we throw is that even those could evolve as we get more meetings in place and as we get more, more folks to engage. So yes, to periodic reports to the board and stakeholders. And nothing is final done until it's ready for presentation to the board. And in other words, no, you wouldn't be asked to make any interim decisions about the plan until the whole plan is ready for May 9th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Omeish.
Thanks. Um, okay, so thank you for this presentation. I know the community meetings and the various strategic team gatherings have been really great and unifying, as has been shared. Um, so that's all encouraging and I'm really excited for our community. Uh, I guess I, I'm thinking a little bit longer, longer term past February and just trying to understand, at what point are we gathering this information and being a little bit, you know, intentional about? And I, and I imagine this to be the board's role, but I think I'm mistaken just hearing kind of the vision being presented. Um, but summarizing all of that and then sitting with the, the, the data and knowing also that the data has a lot it doesn't say. And, and knowing that there's going to be decisions we have to make based on our understanding of where the departments are. You know, just last work session, we were discussing, you know, Dr. Presidio. We were talking about some of our academic programming and how it really just takes more deliberate, thoughtful reflection around what we're doing, because not everything has a return on investment analysis or quantitative numbers that we can rely on, right? So I think, I, I guess I'm struggling to, to see where we're headed, at, at what stage we're going to sit down with all that information and then prioritize and decide, you know, what, the targeted universalism piece, right? That we talked about way early on of building frameworks that allow us to be equitable top-down in our system. And then defining kind of what priorities we want to have in the strategic plan. I, can you clarify for me when that's happening? And is that staff-heavy? Is that the strategic planning team, the core team that only two board members are a part of? Or, yeah, I think some clarity around that will be helpful. Because no matter what, you know, there, there's a lot of the community feedback, which is essential to guiding what we're doing. There's the limited There's the limited data we have, and then there's all kinds of other considerations and information, institutional knowledge, whatever it might be, that will go into being intentional, right? It's not just what we hear translating into a plan, but there has to be some intentionality around the limitations of that.
Correct. And the intentionality is partly where we come, in my team, working with district-level folks, with the division-level people. And what you described actually goes on every step of the way. I don't know, Marcy, if you could put up the PowerPoint again, slide five. Is that possible, please?
We'll pull it up, Mutu.
Okay. I think it's slide five. Yeah. Actually, if you, yeah, this will work. The, what Ms. Amish is referring to is that solution piece, and it's going to be iterative. Everyone gets to, actually, if you go to the next slide, slide six. The different, everyone gets a chance to weigh in, but at some point, you know, my team working with the division team will begin to sift through. I call that part of the process, you know, sausage making. There's a ton of stuff that's coming in. Not all of them will necessarily make a plan. So there'll be some judgment that needs to be made, and that's where the periodic updates with the superintendent's cabinet initially, and then when the board comes in. At some point, we have to decide on which, what's going to make the cut and what isn't. Specifically around circle number three, the very first bullet there, there are lots of different things we could do to effect different outcomes for students. But which ones are going to be the strategic priorities and key actions that we're settling on? So the net is going to bring in a whole bunch of stuff. They, not all of them will make the final cut. Some will make a cut because they fit the local context. Some will make a cut because of what Ms. Markovian said early on, because they did best practices. So there's going to be some discernment or judgment that the superintendent and Hertz will be called to make before the final recommendations come back to the board.
Yeah, I guess I was under, you know, initially when we did our first retreat around the strategic plan, I was under the impression that we would have retreats moving forward that were allowing us to build that versus, I guess, the setup where we're asking questions about what's happening without us. Yeah, I mean, the sausage making certainly has to involve top leadership and all the information we have, but, I mean, I don't know. If Dr. Reed, that's your vision, I guess we're moving in that direction, but I'm a little bit confused. Yeah.
So Ms. Amish, we have work sessions that we calendared monthly, and as we choose, right now, there's not information processed for us to look at. So today really was an update and overview. I think at any one of the subsequent work sessions where we actually have data for you to all come around, of course, that would be what we would want to do. That's part, you're part of the sausage making, to use Mutu's term. But today, we're still early days in that. The survey and student voice just concluded. So I think the first time we would be able to look at data would be in January. But absolutely, that's something that we, you know, calendar time for.
Okay. Yeah, and just thinking about not wanting to wake up and then find a plan is complete, and we were never part of it. But, but no, I guess the piece where I see us able to work on this is that the community feedback data will come to us later, but the data that the community has been reviewing, right, the disaggregated data, which is really insightful and presented in a way that we actually haven't seen before, that's stuff we can discuss now, right? Like, that's stuff we can work on developing insights from and analyzing as a collective, even before knowing what the community's reaction is, and then factoring that in as additional information. A question to my colleagues, like, where are we on this process? I really think we've got to catch it before it runs ahead of us and make sure that we're being intentional, again, because otherwise, we're just channeling what voices have already told us, and we already know what the voices we hear from say.
Your time is up. I gave you quite a bit longer.
Yeah, but that's a question for you, too. I mean, organizing this.
I wanted to address your point. So when we had our retreat, what we did is we sat down at the beginning of the school year, I think it was in August or September, and calendared out a work session a month to, you know, it might be a full work session, might be a half-work session on strategic planning. And I've been very careful in trying to protect that time to make sure that the board, not just a couple retreats, but monthly, had time to check in. So where we're on the process now is the part where we're gathering the community stakeholder feedback, right? And then we'll bring that to the board and look, but we already have them in the calendar every month. There was a question at camp earlier, I think, from somebody, why do we have so many work sessions? And this is one of the reasons why, is because we took all of our hold work sessions and looking at the timing of each month, and we're going to take one of those, we're going to use every hold work session a month so we can have dedicated monthly time for strategic planning. And so it's all, it's part of the process that will be part of the board's role. So the board is not just going to be a passive part of this. Dr. Reed?
Yeah, the other piece of data that we've taken really careful notes about are the goal reports that the board has discussed, because in particular, I think it's goal one. A lot of the data, albeit you've shared, it is presented differently, the 76-page data booklet, but really, a significant amount of the data and the gaps were part of our goal one report. So taking really thoughtful notes, the board in some ways has had the benefit of a lot more conversation. So my hope is that when the board looks at the student survey data, the 76-page data, the community forum data, that you're going to have the benefit of having looked at a lot of that more closely. The community, in some cases, hadn't seen the data in that fashion. So we do have notes from those goal reports.
You want to go back, Ms. Amish? Okay. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I do want to say thank you for that clarification. I was that board member who was asking, how come we now have a weekly work session? It's very helpful to know that one of them, yeah, I'm sorry, a weekly work session instead of twice a month. It's good to know that it's because time has been devoted for this. That's very helpful to have that. I also want to kind of support what Ms. Amish was saying, and I'm glad that we have the space so that this process doesn't, you know, the horse don't leave the stable without us being involved. So thank you for ensuring, Dr. Reed, that we have time to do that, because I do think that the board has to be part of the sausage making. Because what I've already started to hear from the community, and I would love to hear from you, Mutu, they want to know, if I engage in this process, I participate fully. Some people are giving a lot of time, four full days' worth, to be here, sitting and offering their concerns, their expertise, their ideas. They want to see that be reflected ultimately in the plan, or minimally have a good rationale as to why. The question that I've been, started to be asked is, how do we make sure that our priorities show up? Whether or not they're aligned to the data, that's going to be the question. If people don't see that they sat in a room and devoted hours and hours and none of that is reflected, there's going to be a sense that the community engagement was just for show. So I wonder, Mutu, what rationale and how will that transparency be provided? It's not just the what, but it's also the why did some of the community feedback and plans, however it is that this is organized, don't make the cut?
The, if we follow the process as, as I believe you see now, the idea behind a note catcher is to make everything transparent, and we don't vote until the process is completed. Dr. Reed's ideas, points of view carry no higher weight than anybody else's. What I will encourage folks to keep doing is to make sure they participate in the conversation, that they're actually at the table. Now, that doesn't mean, it's important to let folks know that not everyone's ideas will necessarily make the final plan. And we can refer them to the arrow diagram where misalignment arrows go all over the place, and alignment, everything going in the same direction. But to get all of us in the same direction, some of us may have to be asked to, you know, rethink our position or to commit to something else. Before we can ask them to do that, though, we have to make sure we keep the process transparent. We can't have backroom deals. We can't have my team going away to just write what we think makes sense. And everything always comes back to the whole team. So my advice, suggestions to those folks who are rightfully concerned about maybe their ideas not being heard, is that they stay at the table. And they, you know, complain loudly when they feel they have something of value that should make the final plan, and it's not being duly considered. They also have to be willing, though, to recognize that since not all ideas can make it, they will be listened to, but we, all of us collectively, may decide to go in some other direction. And that's just an unfortunate fact of a consensus process, where folks may have to be asking, you know, can you live with this, even if it's not exactly what you had in mind? So short answer to the question is, they should stay at the table and keep all of us honest, stay engaged.
Sure, I appreciate that, but in a community that I think many of us will concede has very often responded to the squeaky wheel. People are just really afraid that even remaining at the table will be insufficient. So I guess what I'm pushing for and asking, as you are engaging in the sausage making that you just talked about, and ideas are being discarded, that there be a rationale provided, just so people have a full sense of clarity, not just, my idea of painting every building yellow just disappeared into the background because you had already decided everything was going to be brick. It should be brought up to, you know, whatever those documents are, wherever this lives on the site. Painting all the buildings yellow was not a good idea because of criteria and reasons A, B, C, criteria X, Y, Z. So I think that will gain us a lot of credibility with people who are questioning this process. And I would like a go back.
Thank you very much. I'll go to the go-backs. I'll start with Ms. McLaughlin.
I'm happy to follow Dr. Anderson, because I think it goes back to something I was trying to communicate earlier. We absolutely want full community engagement in this process. But if you don't have any kind of framework or guardrails about what this is and what this isn't, it's almost like parents going to their kids and saying, let's just talk about what it is that you think is going to give you a happy childhood. And what the kids are going to say they think gives them a happy childhood may not actually be in their best interest. And so I know it's not a perfect analogy, but I'm trying to lay out that, you know, I'm looking through the presentation that's, I guess, 39 pages, and it gives, like, the North Shore School District strategic plan, and then Kansas City and Middleton City Schools. And this is what I'd shared with you, all of my colleagues at our retreat in early September. I like to work with frameworks that here's sort of best-in-class of strategic plans around the nation. Here's what we, from the leadership team and the superintendent to the board, with our consultants, looked at and said, wow, this is really amazing work across the nation. And now we're bringing it out to our community to say, when you look at people who've already done this work, hopefully informed by all the things we're now doing, it's not cutting them out of the process, but it is, maybe I wanted a more streamlined and efficient sausage making, because I frankly think people might actually have appreciated having a better sense of what this is all building toward. And Ms. Amish and Dr. Anderson, if that isn't a piece of what you're trying to capture, it's very much, I guess I would say, Mutu, help me understand, how do we bring our community to this understanding that we are building this within a framework of best practice and not just their brainstorming in a vacuum?
One of the things we do is at every stage, and it will become more evident, once we get to the solution piece, we actually have a point of view in terms of a database. So when we're working on the goals, for example, we just want to ask everyone, what do you think the goals ought to be? We have a database, in this particular case of 18 goals, that you will see in some of the most forward-looking strategic plans and school systems. So we, we do influence, as part of our role as facilitators, by bringing the ideas that, based on research or we've learned from some of our other clients, as a starting point for everything. And so when we get to the strategy-making, there'll be a strategy database. When it comes to the professional practices for the instructors, there's a database also. And that's where the best practice ideas are usually injected into the local process.
Thank you, Mutu. I appreciate that.
So really, the approach we take, once we, and we're very transparent about this, when we define our role as facilitators, we don't command or control, but we do direct. And the way we do it direction, again, is through those databases, where we give you enough to think about. If you have to select only three things, let's say, three priorities, we don't give you a database of three. We might give you a database of 12, all 12 research-based, research-validated. And you get a chance to discuss among yourself which one, which direction you want to go. That's really how the process evolves, once we get to the solution phase. At every point, there will be some research-based database that will be bringing to the conversation.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Derenakofax. Actually, sorry, Dr. Anderson, then Ms. Derenakofax.
This is pretty brief. I thought I heard, and maybe I missed something, which is very possible, that we were going to land somewhere around to four or five points or four or five buckets. Did I hear that, Mutu or Dr. Reed?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Can you refresh my memory as to how we landed on these four or five buckets?
Okay. The, they're actually two or three sets of four or five buckets. The first four or five buckets would be the goals for student learning and achievement. So when we're formulating the goals and the measures for student progress, and what we call excellence targets or performance benchmarks, we will be encouraging you to have no more than four or five goals. So all of those will be expressed in terms of outcomes for students. Then the next one would be, okay, if these are the four or five goals we want for students, how do we want to build a house so that we can nurture all those students? And then we will ask you to define four foundations of our pillars. And for those pillars, we'll give you some criteria. You need one foundation, one pillar that's about teaching and learning. You need one foundation or pillar that recognizes that schools can't do it alone. You need one foundation that's about investing in people, and one that's about bringing all the pieces together. So we'll give you those four criteria, and those become the building blocks of the educational house. So that's another set. And then the final set is for each one of those pillars now, we say, now, let's get specific about what will happen on our pillar number one, teaching and learning. And we'll encourage you to have not 37 things, but maybe between three and six things we will do well on that teaching and learning. Three to six things will do well on that schools can't do it alone. Three to six things will do well on investing in people, and then on that bringing it all together. So three to, three to four to five things on goals, four pillars to the house, and then three to six specific things on each pillar.
Thank you for that. Can you also kind of share with me a little bit in terms of how did we land on that, or is that, or those are your recommendations? Or the?
Now, the, what you will get from us will be a database of teaching and learning pillars, database of schools can't do it alone pillars. The processes regarding how to, what will work for the division will come through the same process we're going through now. So the instructional focus team gets a way in on what those four ought to be. The core planning team gets a way in on it, probably not at the community forum level, unless time permits. So each, we give the four criteria, and each, most of the teams get a chance to define what it ought to be for the division. So that's how we'll arrive at what those are. Again, we define the criteria, you make them specific to the division.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keys Camaro?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm trying to get some clarification, and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. I assume you're saying we're having four or five buckets on particular topics that are being given to members of the community. Is that following a pattern from other districts or best practices, or where is that coming from?
Both, from other districts and best practices. It's It's generally speaking, we are minimalist, or I'm a minimalist. You could write a strategic plan that covers everything so that when everyone reads it, they can see their particular point of view reflected. There's a place for that. Our approach is a little bit different. We guide our clients towards really making tough decisions about what are the most vital things that we cannot commit to. And again, that's just with the process of discussion you have internally. What we bring to that process, again, will be the correct criteria and a database just to get a conversation going.
Okay. And at what point do you think it's critical for the board to have input on how that process is moving forward?
Yeah. Actually, at every point, if you recall the diagram that has the planning teams, with the core planning team at the center, in the same way that we meeting with the alignment team three times and the faith team twice and so on, we ought to be doing the same thing with the board. For example, what would have been great, it would be great to start by taking the board through the data conversation, just like everybody else did. And when we get to the goals conversation, the board also gets to put its voice in. You're not being asked to make final decisions yet. You will do that ultimately on May, but what works well is when the board is considered to be a stakeholder group with all the rights and responsibilities that the other groups have. And I think that's what the board chairman, you described a few moments ago. So as often as we can have a chance to work with the board, this conversation ought to evolve from us giving you an update to giving you a chance to actually get your hands in the sausage mix also. And then you become one of the input nodes into the collective conversation.
Okay. But you haven't gotten to the point of sharing data with the community yet.
We'll share that with the community, the five groups that we met with.
Okay. I guess maybe I'm asking for a type of syllabus so we can understand what the process is going to look like and how the board is participating. I heard our board leaders state that they set aside time. I don't recall a discussion as to how that, you know, was set up, but as I listen, I sat here because I guess I was slightly confused in terms of understanding the process. And typically, if a board member is unclear, then sometimes the community is too. So, I mean, is that possible in laying out? I know we have, I know what the timeline is in terms of when we're supposed to finish, but in terms of board participation and what the community is getting when and when we get it and when we get to have participation and when we might be meeting to discuss it, is that something that we could lay out in a timeline?
I think it's in the, the answer is yes. And I think it's in the calendar that we have for this process with the, again, with the core planning team, there are four, five meetings, instructional focus team, four meetings, and I think we have five set aside for the board also. And we can come more frequently if that's the board's desire. But I'm suggesting that we treat the board as one of those planning teams and take the board, make sure we take the board through the same process in a very timely manner. You're not, you won't be asked to sit in a way to make decisions about what's been done, but rather to have your voice be an integral part in shaping what will come back to you on May 9th as the final document.
I think if we could get that schedule, however, we might lay that out, it might be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, we will definitely do that. I think it's also connected to the project management work that I believe Marcy's sending out weekly. And what we need to do, I think, is not just capture kind of where we've been, but I think what you're asking for is what does it look like moving forward? So we can certainly add that in. Mutu, just one other quick question. Can you pull up an example of the four building blocks and then the clockwheel? And maybe it's not possible because you're not controlling the PowerPoint, but you know what I'm talking about, the building blocks, like just, I don't think the board has seen an example of that other than buried in a document.
I can share my screen. I can.
Okay. And then the clockwheel, which really is the cabinet's work moving forward, and it's an example of a clockwheel, but that becomes the work of the cabinet moving forward.
Can I share my screen now, Marcy?
They're working on it. Yep.
I think I can. Okay, I'm just grabbing, this is one example. Do you see the screen for Betel?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. The, so just to point out what's common, this is our approach to strategic planning. Kids first, circle number one, instruction second, circle number two, infrastructure third. And the plan is always laid out according to those three. So for this school system, they have five goals. They have specific measures of progress for those goals. And then there's a third column in their case that talks about what equity means, what are the equity priority groups for each one of the goals. So equity is not just taking care of English learners or Hispanic kids or black kids. Equity, you know, back to the very first question asked by, about the equitable outcomes, is that it goes back to, it's connected to each of the goals. So what are the measures for early success and which group of students we need to pay particular attention to? What are the measures for the whole child? What are the measures for achievement, for opportunities for all students, and then post-secondary? So this is what the goal part of the exercise looked like of the final report. Then we go next to saying, if we could get really good at, yeah, at four things, what would those four things be? And we call those the four pillars. So this district, their first pillar, which is about teaching and learning, they call that personalized, rigorous, culturally responsive teaching and learning. You won't see that language in our database. So we use the databases to just get the conversation going and then each client gets a call, whatever they want. For schools can't do it alone, they call that foundation, safe climate and strong relationships with families and community. For their third pillar, which is about investing in people, they call that effective teacher for every student, effective leader for every school. And for their final pillar, which is about bringing all the pieces together, they call that data-driven, effective and efficient operations. So the division, Fairfax County Public Schools, will get to define what are those building blocks of our educational house. And then for each one of those building blocks, what are the things we have to get really, really good at? So for building block A, this district said, we want student-centered, engaged learning. We want aligned instructional core and we want adaptive and equitable learning for every student. And then they can define specific strategies in the next section. And same thing for their community engagement building blocks. They want to, they have a building bridges. They have a family engagement and communication and community resources. So you can, the, some people call it, you get a strategy map. It's a map that they're going to use to drive all the work. And what comes after this one would be just the specific examples of key actions. So for the one o'clock, these are the specific things that they commit to on one o'clock. For their two o'clock priority, these are the things they're committing to. And so that's how it unfolds. So you get to define the goals and the measures. You get to define the four pillars. They get to map how those four pillars will be used so that we have a connected whole. And finally, you get very specific about specific things that need to happen on that each one of those pillars. So this is for pillar A. This is for pillar B. It's, I saw some specific actions. And I want to go back to something that Dr. Anderson said at the beginning. The way the process works, anything that we collectively feel makes sense for our students, even at a very micro level, there's a place for it in the process. It might not be in the first 15 pages of the plan, but because of the construct, something we're really proud of, this notion of inviting us to think that, we're not trying to have a, it's not by the strategic plan to solve three specific problems. It's a strategic plan that will get all kids home and will be built to last. So we want to, we invite you to build the strategic plan, four solid foundations. And very much like the building you're in now, I can almost guarantee you that the pillars of that building have not been touched since it was built. But you've probably moved inside walls, you've rearranged ceilings, you do a lot of things, you can do a lot of things within those four foundations, but you don't mess with the foundation. And that's what gives it the continuity and resiliency. These clients finished their first strategic plan in 2022. The second one, they're just tweaking because it's still back to the same fundamental ideas. Where they do it, most of their tweaking is on the specific key actions that they will implement. But the superstructure for their plan stays solid and it could last you 10, 15, 20, 30 years, very much like the foundations of a building can hold it up for 100 years. So that's where it's headed.
Thank you. I'm just going to briefly, because I have to run out, I know Ms. Corbett Sanders does as well, for the Legislative Board of Supervisors briefing. So just going to just briefly say that we do have a retreat that we were planning for, you know, January, February, to go over all of these pieces to kind of be part of that voice. So just wanted to put that out there for those who may not be aware. It's January budget season, the work sessions were hard to schedule, so we're looking at a retreat on that piece of it. And we are trying to stick to, as we have been, two work sessions a month, which is what we've had since we started in August. So, but we'll have more information about that. And having said that, Mutu, I appreciate your time and explanation. I know it's kind of hard mid process to make sure that we're informing the board, but also leaving room for the board to be part of the process. So thank you for that and we'll have more. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Janet Kofax. You're next, Karen.
Thank you. Appreciate all that's here. I would ask, now that we know that there is going to be a strategic planning retreat in January, that, pardon me?
June or February. We've got to fill out the calendars.
Okay. Is that we actually, in building on Ms. Omeish's comments, actually unpack the data that Superintendent Reed has shared with us? And if we could have for the board members, one central location where all of the data that is shared with each of the individual groups that are meeting with you, Mutu, is actually available in a library that says the strategic planning 22 to 23 and has all of the data available so that people can look at it? The data that was sent out is very helpful, but I think it requires a broader discussion than we had slated for time today. And so I would just encourage that we do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, okay, you had, you go back to Elaine, did you have a go back? No, did you? Oh, that's Karen's up. Sorry. Okay, go ahead, Megan.
So, Dr. Reed, I want to be a little more specific to what Ms. Corbett Sanders said. This happens with almost everything the board does. We need to have staff post all relevant documents to the meeting page. So for today, it would have been really helpful if staff had posted that 75-plus-page data report that your team sent to us last night. Once it comes to the full board, it's now a public document. So A, we should have had that posted to board docs today. I, when things come in lots of different sources, then we may miss them. So I've been poring through everything that got posted today. That wasn't there. I did not have the time to read through your update. I really would echo what Ms. Corbett Sanders said every time. So in the next meeting we have, I don't want, well, that was posted at that agenda. I want it all right back in the same place. If we're doing this work, we've got to have all relevant documents in it because that's where today might have been a little bit better dialogue because we would have seen that data-rich report and understood what Mutu was talking about and how we're going to drive the conversation with our community on it. And, you know, I do think that to what Ms. Keys-Gamaro had said, we may be in a better place if, maybe in chairs, to talk about what the vision is on how we'll connect in the boards, work with this, where it's going to dovetail in along the way. And, you know, going to that data question I had earlier, again, Mutu, I just want to understand why that data analysis doesn't happen first so we go out to our community because some of the slides will give statistics and some don't. And it's really hard to, I think, to get meaningful input from the community if they don't have the data analysis to say where we can all recognize the gaps and the challenges and students left behind are.
Are you making the case, at every meeting, everyone has had access to the data at this point? The larger teams have the 76-page version, and then for the smaller teams, we took out like 32 pages, so it's not overwhelming. Is there something else that you'd like us to do next time, please?
Yeah. All I can say is that the data report that was over 70 pages that Dr. Reed sent to the board last night was not posted today. So the public couldn't see it and the board didn't see it unless you happened to read through Dr. Reed's overall update from yesterday.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Omeish.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. Yeah, I think that's just in terms of ease of access, perhaps in terms of framing our next conversation, Mutu, you know, to make it productive, kind of in a similar way, actually, to what has been done for the community, where the community has had the chance to reflect on this data. I know we started it, but very briefly in our retreat, we didn't really have the chance to delve deeper. So maybe giving us the opportunity to analyze this, reflect on it, you know, come up with some preliminary, I don't know, you know, pinpoints that will allow us to start the strategic planning process on our end. And the community feedback when it comes in January or the consolidation of all that will be a supplement that allows us to fine-tune or further, you know, polish what we're working on. But we could start with our own foundation. And I think if you lay the groundwork for us in how we work with these numbers, because it's also a lot, so I also don't want to like look at 70-some pages of, you know, numbers and then expect a productive outcome from the board, right? So if you facilitate a conversation for us that guides us towards extrapolating some common, you know, foundational points or something that give us a basis for what our next layer will be, I think that could be a productive use of our time.
Would you like us to do that before the board meets or during the board meeting? What's your preference?
I mean, I think you would facilitate the conversation that we would have during our meeting, right?
Okay, yeah. And that's what we prefer too, because we, we very dogmatic about not trying to influence unduly other people's opinions. So it would be great for us to facilitate a conversation. You do the meeting making. Now, we can chime in and point things out, but I like the way you framed it and I'd be very happy to be part of that discussion.
Yeah, but I imagine it can't be too loose that it ends up being, it doesn't go anywhere, right? So you guys could give it some preliminary thought and have several options perhaps on how we proceed or, you're a facilitator, right? So, yeah, doing that in a way that makes it a productive conversation, but allows us to build some foundation for the upcoming strategic plan work, I think will help. Yeah. Thank you so much. And I say this as one of 12, but I'm trying to move us in a direction. So I understand my colleagues may have some thoughts, too.
Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you. I just wanted to get, I feel like we're almost talking in circles. So what Ms. Omeish is talking about, in your process, isn't there space, you're already planning for us to be part of that work to do the very same things, correct?
That's correct. And I think the next date that I heard about is the February 21st date for the board to do what I'll call a data dive. for the board to do what I'll call a data dive. And also, after you've done the data dive on the twenty-first, I would also suggest we build timing for us to share with you what's been coming from the other teams. And the data that I have on my calendar, I've been told about is February twenty-first.
Right, so it's all part of the process. So we are kind of proceeding in... Okay, I just want a clarification for all of us to hear that clearly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Tolan, have you spoken yet? Okay, so Dr. Anderson and then Ms. Tolan.
Sorry, mine is very quick. I was just hoping to be able to be pointed to the documents that you just shared. Do we, where you went through the pillars and the measures, do we have that? And if so, which one is it?
You don't yet, because I was just showing you samples from other districts. I'm more than happy to, and I have several examples open up. I can send a list of those to the division folks to share with the board.
I'm just trying to wrap my mind around it because I see some things here that look similar, but it's not exactly quite of what you've just shared. I'd just like to have it if it, if you think it would be helpful for me to land in a place of understanding as to where you're going to guide us, I would definitely like to have it. And also, one last thing, as Ms. Omeish was just talking about how you're processing with the board, and I'm looking at some of the documents that we had posted for this meeting where we have the note catchers with all of the working teams. Is there going to be a similar process for the board, like a board note catcher? Super. All righty, thank you, that's it.
Ms. Tolan?
All right, I think maybe my comment was kind of taken care of. I just would like to say that, you know, for people on the board, I think originally, you know, we had that circle of the various teams, right, that would feed everything into the, ultimately, I think, the core team that will compile all this information. And then we had an opportunity to sign up for a team if you wanted to be, take part on one of the teams. Like you guys went to the faith community team, etc., for example. So all of the teams that have met to date have been facilitated in conversation going through these pages and pages of data. Two varying levels, the core team and the instructional team, because they've met for two full days. We probably spent ten hours, like, looking at the data, right? Versus, I would suspect, your team met for two hours, so it was a more abbreviated process, which is all part of how this is working. So I guess, if I'm gathering correctly, what you are asking for, Ms. Omeish, is just for the board to sit down and be facilitated through that data analysis in the same manner. So then we would understand as everything's being pulled together. So I don't think you're asking for anything, Mutu, like, different than what you've already facilitated. It's just another way to treat the board, as you said earlier, as a separate team.
My side.
Thank you, and I see no other placards up. So the one thing I think we will do is we will have our clerk, Ms. Medea. We will have you work with Mutu and Dr. Reed to find a place, one place in the library and to ensure that all documents that are presented to the community are available to us. We will have, we will also, in, I think maybe I'll have Rachna and I get together all the work sessions and put it in one calendar that are all part of, that will just be part of the strategic plan because we realize there's lots of work sessions coming up because of CIP budget and this strategic plan. So we will have that all there. And then we have a clear need, I think, to do a deep dive and conversation. And this format as a work session isn't the best way to do that. So maybe we will take, well, I'm just talking out loud here. I'm not saying this is going to happen because Ms. Ismar Heiser is not here. But I'm thinking maybe to expand upon one of the work sessions, make it, maybe make it a mini-retreat, something like that, Mutu and Kenneth. And, you know, I think we would like you there. So we'll work with Dr. Reed. But I'm hearing that, I'm seeing heads shaking, and I have a question or comment from Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I want to point a clarification. So the library is not how people find things, so...
Oh, I just use that as a term.
No, no, but I think, just to make sure we're clear walking away from this, this school division does a really good job. And we do our budget every year. We have a dedicated page on the website that says, you want to know about our budget process? And it's right there on the webpage. I would like that, if it does not exist, a strategic plan webpage. And then board members, the public, anyone, it's all going to be loaded there. That's how people find things, not in our electronic library.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. All right, with that, this work session is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you all.